All right. It is 7:02. I'm sure Jack will be in, but let's get started out of respect for everyone's time. Happy Tuesday, February 15th. I hope everyone had a great Valentine's Day. We are now calling this Cohasset Select Board Meeting to order, starting with a roll call vote.
Corey Evans here.
Jeanne Haley Dippold here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Carrie Thompson here. All right, all are invited to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance if they would like. Got our flag here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I will now read our meeting Zoom language and then explain public comment. So tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by me. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant and all votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call vote. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hand on Zoom and at my discretion, I'll promote you into the meeting. You don't have to have your camera on, but we at least need to be able to hear you and you must provide your full name and address for public record. Please note that comments on Facebook are not being monitored and this meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV and our Facebook page. All right, so I know we have a busy meeting agenda tonight. In terms of public comment, if anyone has a public comment that they would like to talk about that's not related to the Barnes Field Complex lease rules and regulations, including lights, please speak. There will be time once we get to that agenda item to talk about that. So if there are public comments about anything else, please raise your hand and we can get those done now.
Call on Carrie.
Yeah. All right, I don't think I see any hands for that. All right, next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. We have a few different weeks to do. I know we've made some corrections on a few of these. How does the board feel about these minute dates after I know changes have been made for a couple of you? Any thoughts, Jean?
I just wanted to update the board that there have been just a few ministerial edits that Diane found and I'm fine with two. I wanted to highlight exactly what they are and I would suggest we move them subject to those edits being adopted, which Tracy has already corrected, but so everyone knows. On the January 4th, 2022 minutes, it's to change care to card at the end of Diane's select board comments. So it's vaccine card, not vaccine care. Likewise, as to December 14th, under the section regarding funding for Elm Street, to correct Diane's name, and then most important, on January 18th, the votes taken before 8:01 were all unanimous, but in fact Diane was not there, so it was four. Four of us who voted not Diane because she was late, so that should be corrected to make that clear.
Wasn't there another change to Jean about recusing yourself on one vote for another meeting minutes that you mentioned last time?
Uh, yeah, I thought that we.
I thought that was fixed. I just wanted to make sure it had been fixed.
That's, that's a good point. Let me check while I'm checking. Corey, I don't know if you.
Yeah, Corey, go ahead.
Yeah, I just noticed, I mean, one of my changes was because we left out a vote that we had taken on December 14th regarding Elm Street. I'm just wondering what, what exactly is our, you know, what rule do we follow about what we bold and what we don't bold? I think my version, I submitted the roll call vote was bolded and in this version it is not. So I'm just curious as to why we change our established pattern of how we highlight things? Or if that was just an oversight, that'd be the only change I'd make to December 14th meeting minutes.
I don't know if we have a necessary policy on the bolding the votes, but we can, do you have a preference, Corey? I don't mind either way.
Well, I just, I think they should all be voted, voted because that's kind of what we did, but I didn't know if votes.
I think it was just an oversight.
Okay.
Yeah, I did fix that one thing.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you.
No, no.
All right. All right, with all these changes considered, I'm willing to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Sorry, we have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, starting with Jack. Jack, I know you just joined us. We are voting to approve the minutes on the agenda.
Right, well, my longstanding policy is until we include the actual video recordings of these, the minutes are incomplete, so I vote nay.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jeanne Haley Dippold, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. All right, that is done. Moving on to a very exciting.
And I, Madam Chair, you know, listen, several times I've had difficulty getting on. And I really think that when we, with Zoom and electronic, the basic thing is when a member of the select board is not on, you might try sending a Zoom link. You might, before you start, you might try to call it. It used to be that you, there would be calls made because I'm sitting here frantically trying to get on. I don't have a Zoom link. So I just think going forward in the future, that would be a very helpful thing to do.
Okay. Yeah, typically worst case scenario with that, Jack, is if you pull the agenda up and just click on the link on the agenda, we can get you in, but we can try to do a better job with the calendar invites being more specific. I know that Zoom links are finicky.
Well, we could also very simply, if somebody isn't, isn't on there, you can contact them.
That is also true. If you didn't, weren't here by now, Jack, I'd be texting you. All right, are we ready to move on to our annual audit presentation? All right. Jim, I see you are here. Welcome.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you doing?
We are good. We are good. We're excited to hear this update.
Okay, thank you. It's, it's, it's not often I hear accounting being exciting, so I appreciate that for you too. As we go through this, just to introduce myself, my name is Jim Powers from Powers and Sullivan. We're CPA from out of Wakefield, Massachusetts, and we are responsible for auditing the financial statements of the town of Cohasset for the past several years and for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. I'm here tonight to present the findings relative to the audit. And with that, I'm going to give a an overview of what I believe are the important things that we need to mention as part of that. And obviously, and Carrie, depending how you like to do it, I can take questions as we go or at the end of each report. Anyway, it's fine, it's fine with me as we go through this.
Okay, yeah, no, I think we can let you do the presentation and then we can hold questions till the end.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to thank Chris and his staff, Dawn and Paula and Susan over at the school for their great cooperation during the audit. They make this a lot easier than it can be, especially during pandemic times. We've had to reinvent a little bit the way we audit, a combination of in person and remotely. And it makes it a little bit more difficult on both parts, but I think we've found that balance where we keep everybody safe and we abide by all the rules as we're supposed to. And again, I do thank them for that. One of the things that is, is good about Cohasset is that you guys do an excellent job from the financial reporting controls. We do a lot of testing on a lot of things throughout the year as we go through to make sure that the numbers at the end of the year and also the numbers that you receive for the select board and the financial updates you get from Chris and Dawn as you go through are an accurate representation of where you are during the year, so you can make judgments in the budgeting process for the current year and what you're doing in the future. Internal controls are really good. Cash is reconciled, which is the most important control from a city or town standpoint. All the time, receivables are in good shape. You budget conservatively and when I go over the financial statements, you'll see how accurately that you budgeted the year, especially the crazy times during the pandemic where a lot of revenues that came in were somewhat could have been compromised and adjusting for that, you actually did a great job relative to that from the boards and Chris's budgetary projections, as you, as you'll find out. We are hired to do an audit, the financial statements and what's also called a federal single audit. And so what our responsibility is, is to give an opinion of whether or not your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted governmental auditing, accounting standards. That's an important thing. We don't look into every little thing you do. We take a look at the financial statements as a whole. We also have to do and do that federal audit of any of the federal funds that you received during the year. And the federal government has specific rules about how we audit. They in effect tell us as independent certified public accountants what they expect us to do and report on that. And so we're doing in effect and replacing what used to be federal auditors or state auditors coming out to review your grants. I'd like to start with that report if we could and give you the results of that. In fiscal year 2021, you spent about $2.4 million worth of federal funds. The biggest ones being school lunch, about $482,000, special education, 381,000. And the new one, which happened in fiscal year 21, the CARES funds, the Coronavirus Relief Act, you spent almost a million dollars of those funds in that particular year. Federal government requires that we audit what we consider major programs and that we have to audit a certain percentage of the total that's received. And so we did specific audit requirements and testing and compliance requirements set up by the federal government for both the CARES funds of a million dollars and the special education fund for about $400,000. Like in previous year, the school does an excellent job. A lot of the grants go through the schools with maintaining and being in compliance with all of their federal and state grants. Again, that finding was the same. We had no findings or question cost relative to both of the major grants. One of the new ones is obviously the CARES grant as you went through. That was unique and different and we all had to learn how to spend that, how to audit that. And the state was, those funds ran through the Commonwealth and Mass Administration Finance. So they had a role to play in approving those particular expenditures. And we did not have any findings related to that. So and in a go forward basis, one of the things that you'll be tested with again, which some would say would be a good thing is the American, the APA funds that you got for the American Relief Plan Act. And those funds, again, are new. As you go through this, there are different ways that you can spend your money on this. One of the things that I've been talking with Dawn about on this is the reporting, evaluating things as you decide to spend those funds. Those are grant funds and those are federal grant funds that you're going to be able to spend. And whether you go through Norfolk County was where some of the funds are going through there or the direct funds that you get, there's all kinds of new requirements relative to how you spend that, those funds and and how to be in compliance with that. One of the things that we suggested and talked to Dawn about is that what we want to do is make sure that we pre-audit everything as you're thinking about spending funds. It makes a lot of sense because it is so new and there's so many requirements depending on what you're spending the money on this for. That particular project that you decide to spend the money on, to make sure that if you spend the money in accordance with the narrative of how you believe you want to spend that, that if you do that, that would be an allowable project. And so it just makes a lot of sense that we work hand in hand with you throughout this process. And this can go on for years, depending on how quickly you decide to spend those funds. So that's just something that we're going through, but I think it was important, even though it's a fiscal 22, 23, 24 issue that I just brought that up tonight on that. Since we're on that, I, this is the end of the report for the single audit. Does anybody have any questions on what I explained in that part of the audit?
Thank you. That was great. Good stopping point. Questions for him. Diane.
I just have a general question, which is, do we have any materials to look at or presentation to look at? Just so I can follow along and take notes.
Did you get, did you get the financial statements and stuff? I had sent drafts down there. I didn't.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't compete. Yeah. And so realistically, what I'm doing Diane is just hitting the highlights on this. And the, the annual comprehensive financial report, it's like 120 pages. And I've been doing these Zoom meetings and it's bad enough trying to walk through 120 page financial statements in person. Try doing that on Zoom.
Yeah.
You know, I do apologize, but that's kind of, I've tried to do that upfront. And the five of you and myself, they're all on different pages. And so I do, so I, I try to do it a little bit different than we, we had in the past when everybody, when I was in person saying, I go to page 42, go to page 115 and you can see that. But one of the things that I didn't do the presentation for is because the town is in such good shape from the standpoint of the critical things like the management letter and what you'll find it and for the single audit. It's really, it, it's only going to be a couple of minute conversation with that. And there's really only about five or six things in the financial statements that I think are worthy of any type of discussion. I know I, I know you budgeted me for 20 minutes, but sometimes I can go on for an hour when I get 20 minutes. And what I'm trying to do is keep this within the timeframe, but hit everything that you need. And one of the things that I work with, we work with Dawn a lot on, on the financials and everything else to make sure that all the, the financial statements, he's in agreement because these are your financial statements. These are not our financial statements. And so he takes full responsibility for that and has made sure that they all tie back into his ledges and it's reported properly. He's also a CPA, which helps a lot as you go through. So, and he has that governmental experience, which makes a huge difference in actually getting this done and why things are in such good shape. God's honest truth, because I don't have to explain things to them like some other clients. He already knows that. Chris, I mean, Dawn actually did the revenue replacement calculation early on before the rules changed, which gave you $10 million, but I'm not going to get into the detail on the new changes relative to, and he was, I shouldn't say it, but he was my only client that did it right.
So that's, that's good to hear for our side.
And so.
Yeah, good job, John. And also just a reminder to everyone watching, because this is a lot of dense material and we do just want to get the highlights for us as a board and for the public watching, but all these audit materials are obviously public and we can make sure they're accessible on our website and for everyone to look at and access if you're excited to go look at those hundreds of pages.
Yeah. And then what we'll do is, you know, once the, once this meeting is over, we'll send over finalized copies of all the reports and then obviously the Chris and the select board could decide what to, how to distribute that, put it on the website. Or whatever you want to do. So again, apologize for that, not having a real presentation. It just experiences taught me this is not.
No apologies necessary.
I appreciate the conversational approach and just highlighting what we need to pay attention to and what we need. No one wanted a hundred slide deck presentation for this. It's fine. Corey, I saw your hand up.
My question was going to be, I appreciated Jim, thanks for your work and obviously Don, if you're out there, thank you. But my question was in regards to revenue replacement. I knew that was, that Don was really leading that and I was going to ask if there was what they're, what your firm's position on it was, but it seemed like Don really figured it out the right way and that's really great news for the town.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, there's some new, there's new wrinkles in that, just from the standpoint of your county. You get to use all of your funds that you get indirectly for revenue replacement, which one of the things that Curry is, people kind of misinterpret revenue replacement, thinking that revenue replacement, oh, we, we lost some revenue during that period of time when the pandemic strike compared to the previous year, which your base year was fiscal 19, and then you compared that to calendar year 20, that Dawn actually did a great job of doing that. And then when they, that was during the interim final rule period. And so you ended up with X amount of revenue replacement as part of that. And then when the final rule came out in the beginning of January, the US Treasury Department changed that to everybody gets $10 million. But you get the $10 million for the funds you get indirect, meaning your funds that you get indirectly. The amounts that you get through the county, they're working out some issues because the final rule changed some things. And I know the county is working hard and diligently to do the best they can in order to maximize the potential for everybody and how they spend their, their money. And another month or so, there may be some changes to that. But depending on what you're going to spend your money on, that's why I talked about earlier as you go through it, to make sure that you spend it correctly as you go through. But revenue replacement is an expenditure category. It sounds like, oh, we lost money, give me back money and I don't have to document how I spend it. What they mean by revenue replacement is that you did lose money during the pandemic period. You didn't get that in. So because you lost that money, you were not able to spend money and you had to probably reduce some budgets because you were having shot falls in there. So what the revenue replacement does is it's replacing your lack of ability because you lost revenue to spend those funds. So it's not that you just get the money. You still have to spend those funds in accordance with the APA regulation. It's just kind of a misnomer that people think, oh, I get the money in, just give me my money. It's not that simple. But one of the good things about using revenue placement, what you can do is you can spend that money on any governmental service. There's a couple of little exceptions. And if anybody asks what a city or town does, you provide governmental services. Everything you do is pretty much a governmental service. You know, the DPW cannot provide that service unless they have that backhoe. So buying a backhoe is a governmental service. Health insurance, in order to have an employee, you have fringe benefits. That's a allowable governmental service. And, and we'll be working with Dawn and Chris to help them define how you, and obviously the select board, if you have any more questions and you want to bring me back on for any of those type of things, we're happy to, to join you. But it's an expenditure of funds and that's what you're describing. It's just not a loss. There's just been a lot of confusion on that. I hope that helps Corey a little bit.
It does. I appreciate that.
Understanding that. So, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Next one, are we good on?
Yep, I think we're good unless you have a follow up, Corey.
Yeah, management letter. Oh, there was a follow, okay, management letter. This is a simple one. One of the things that we do recommend is that you document all of your internal controls procedures around your policies, your procedures, your accounting, how you, how you maintain your books and records and things like that. There's a good system in place at Cohasset that I had talked about earlier, but what's missing from that is a complete documentation of what you do. It's just, it helps with continuity in case, you know, heaven forbid that Dawn decides to go somewhere else. Somebody else can walk in and you know what you do. But it also gives a benchmark to auditors to audit to that specific policy and procedure and how things are done. We can do all of that. We understand that. We just think it's a good idea to increase. It's not a material weakness. It's not a significant deficiency. And I know Dawn's and Chris is, you know, working on that. If you remember several years ago, the length of the management letter, it was, some of you have been around with me for a while on this. It was a heck of a lot longer and you worked to get rid of a lot of those things. That's why I'm able to give you a management letter that's so thin, which is just that particular point. Now that you've kind of fixed everything, it's time to document that. And that's what we'd like to say, see happen in the future. Pandemic has slowed everybody down a little bit. We have this similar comment in other ones. Just because the key people that document this, their priorities have changed because there's all this additional accounting from the CARES Act, from budgeting and things like that. We've just seen that. So that's the only management letter point that we have. The other thing that we didn't get to do, especially during the pandemic, and hopefully we can get back to it a little, is minor departments. Sometimes Chris or somebody, Chris would say, Jim, could you go out and take a look at this particular department that isn't material or significant for the financial statements? But maybe somewhere that you want us to visit to just check the internal controls, oversee cash collections at, I'm just going to say Council of Agents or something like that, or one of the departments. With the pandemic, and this is true for pretty much all of our clients, that's kind of stopped a lot because getting and visiting has been tough. Hopefully that opens up this year and it sounds like it may with things getting released, but we can still do that, but we really didn't do that in fiscal year 21 to really go up and visit any of the minor departments. We focused our audit attention on the departments, you know, treasury, collecting, assessing, school, et cetera, as opposed to going out there. So I apologize for that, but that's just kind of a result of the pandemic. And that usually generates a management letter suggestion as we go through that. And hopefully in the future, we'll be able to get back to that. Any questions on the management letter?
Any questions on that? All right, we're good.
Okay. Probably over my 20 minutes already, but.
That's all right. Only by a few. We're getting through it.
Okay. So the financial statements, one of the biggest things with the financial statements, as I said earlier, these are your financial statements. These are not us financial statements. We assist Dawn in putting together the financial statements. Dawn can do this all by himself without our assistance, but the way we have it set up, providing that assistance is a more important way to utilize our expertise and his providing all the information. All of the adjustments that are made to the financial statements to convert from what you have as the Uniform Municipal Accounting System, UMS, that the Commonwealth and Mass Department of Revenue dictates all cities and towns maintain their books and ledges. Dawn maintains on his books and ledges. However, the financial statements done in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, which governmental auditing principles, which is standard throughout the, throughout the nation. So things have to be added to that. So there's a budgetary basis of financial statement, which is part of these reports. Then it has to be converted into what's called fund-based statements. And that's because of your financial statements have to match and the accounting principles used to determine those particular numbers has to be standard, not only for Massachusetts communities, but for New York, Iowa, California, et cetera. So rating agencies, people that don't want to invest in you, et cetera, any of the stakeholders will have the ability to measure apples to apples as you go through that. Then in addition to that, you turn fund-based statements into full accrual statements, similar to what a commercial entity does, which, which captures all of your long-term assets, all of your long-term liabilities, including things such as your capital assets depreciated, your other post-employment benefits, OPEB liabilities, you know, for your health insurance that you pay to retirees. In addition to that, the pension liabilities, your unfunded pension liabilities and how that has to be reported, all of your long-term debt, compensated absences, et cetera. All of these adjustments are prepared by Dawn's team as we go through. As the finance director, he's responsible for that and we audit all of those particular adjustments in the conversion from how he maintains his books and records to the fund-based GAAP financial statements, generally accepted county principles and the entity-wide financial statements. So these are truly your financial statements. He's responsible for the. So these are truly your financial statements. He's responsible for the notes to the financial statements. Chris writes the introductory sections that explains what anybody's going to read as part of the annual comprehensive financial report. The, and, and also the management discussion and analysis. There's combining statements, there's notes, there's a ten-year information in the back in the statistical section, that what makes up annual comprehensive financial reports. And so our job is to tell the reader that we agree in effect that the numbers present fairly your financial results and your financial position and condition as of and, and through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Our opinion, what you don't want to have in there is any type of modification, meaning that except for this, this doesn't meet standards. Your report, according to our audit opinion, based on our testing and the work we did, meets those standards. And so that's what you want to see. That doesn't mean everything is perfect. That means that it's pretty close. There could be some minor errors in there that get corrected in the next year. You know, things like prior year bills, you may not catch until next year, that happen every now and then. But they're not going to change the fact that, you know, you have you know, thirteen million dollars of fund balance in the general fund. If you're missing eight thousand dollars worth of a bill that you didn't catch because somebody sent it in real late, it's not going to change anybody's opinion of whether or not to invest in Cohasset's bonds. And so you're significantly correct on that. It really doesn't change free cash that's calculated as you go through. So you do have a clean opinion, no modifications to that. The funds that are important as you go through, the entity-wide statement shows all that full accrual. The rating agencies use that as they go through and determine whether or not any significant liabilities, unfunded liabilities there. Their main two concerns are the OPEB liability realistically and the pension liability, which I'll talk about in a minute. But realistically, your general fund budgetary fund balance and the stabilization fund balances are probably the most important thing that they take a look at and everybody needs to look at because that's where the Department of Revenue takes a look at. They certify the free cash from those particular numbers. That's how you budget every year and that's what you need to be in compliance with. And what you'll find is your, your general fund budgetary fund balance was a little less than five million dollars at the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. And in effect, you broke even for the year. Remember I said earlier that you really did a great job budgeting? You know, you got in about forty-nine million dollars worth of revenues and you spent about forty-nine million dollars worth of expenses, including transfers to like stabilization funds, et cetera, as you go through. So you had a three hundred thousand dollar change on a fifty million dollar operation. That's pretty good budgeting, the way I look at it. I see Corey smiling and at least I think he agrees with me. And so in addition to that, the other thing that the rating agencies, anybody who wants to look at to take a look at your financial health is to maintain that type of solid fund balance on a year-to-year basis. But in addition to that, what do you have in stabilization funds? That's important because things happen, like a pandemic, that you might have to draw on that as you go through. And what you'll find is that your general stabilization fund, you have three of these funds had about five point two million dollars at the end of fiscal year nineteen. A nice healthy fund balance to offset anything that is unexpected that could happen. You have a capital stabilization fund of three million dollars. Again, there's a nice way to put aside money for one-time expenditures that allow you to react to your needs if something comes up and plan for that as part of your capital budgeting and how you fund that. And then you also have a special education stabilization fund of about five hundred thousand dollars. If you talk to the schools, special education is one of the hottest things to budget because things, children come in and out of the system and sometimes unexpectedly. And it, you know, it's everybody's responsibility, obviously, to pay for that. And you have to make sure that you're in compliance and, and so your student gets everything they need. And some of these particular students may require some significant expenses as you go through that, depending on who comes in. So having that in is a sound business, financial plan to, to have that in place to make sure you have a little bit of reserve. So your budget doesn't go upside down at the school and that's an important expenditure. Think that all it's, to me, it's just good fiscal management to have a sound, you know, you know, ten percent of your budget, you spend forty-nine million, you've got five million dollars in your general stabilization fund. And then you have these excess other stabilization funds for other needs. And, and in addition to that, you know, you still have five million dollars of general fund fund balance as you go through. So I think that's an important thing. Any questions on the general fund, just as we go through the highlights?
And we're about, about to be fifteen minutes over this agenda item, Jim, so I know this is important, but also want to be respectful.
Give me three, give me three minutes, I'll get through.
That's fine. Just a little time warning for all of us, so we're aware.
Okay. Other funds that.
Two, two thousand. I'm sorry, Jim, I just couldn't resist.
That's okay. I, I, I usually go over, so I'm not surprised at myself.
That's all right.
General funds important. You also have two significant enterprise fund, the water fund and the sewer fund. Most important statement to take a look at that because these financial statements are full accrual statements with all the long-term assets and liabilities in there. You take a look at the statement of cash flows and what you'll find is that your statement of cash flow shows significant surplus in each one of the years to adding to the unrestricted, unreserved net position inside of those funds, operating as intended, paying for their particular expenses as they go through. Again, well-budgeted, well-run on that. Any questions on water and sewer?
Gene.
Um, Jim, given where we are on the agenda, is it fair to assume that you might be available later for questions? If we wanted to dive in deeper to any of this with, with Don?
I, I could, I could say if you needed, realistically, the only thing I, I just wanted to, to mention it outside of that was just your OPEB liability. Your OPEB liability, you're funding that, you have a fifty-six million dollar OPEB liability at a discount rate of two point four four percent. You're about nine percent funded. Your pension plan through Norfolk County, you're about seventy percent funded. Your liability for the pension is seventeen point eight million dollars and you're making all your contributions. You're on track to, in effect, fund that over the period of time. And you're doing a pretty good job. You're higher than most in the OPEB funding, especially at that discount rate. You're putting about five hundred thousand dollars a year into that fund. Actually, last year you made about a million dollars worth of investment income on five, on four million dollars worth of funds. So excellent management of those particular funds and that's the highlight. And I, I can stop right now and you don't have to see me again. All right.
No, Jim, I, I don't want you to feel that rushed. And again.
No, I'm not rushed.
If we need to bring you back for a part two, we can, if there are.
You can bring me back for a part.
We're not making you stay later tonight, though. I want to clarify that.
You know, you look like you have an interesting agenda. I always love.
Oh, it is. It's gonna be a real barn burner. You should watch. All right. Other questions for Jim about any of those things he mentioned?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, all.
Jim, we really appreciate it. This is critical information and thank you for being here tonight to tell us.
Sorry for going over.
No, it's okay.
Bye. Take care all. Bye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Thank you.
And yeah, Gene and other members, if we do want to bring him back for any more specific questions after reviewing the documents, let, let Corey and I know. All right. Moving on to licenses and permits, our first order of business is a change of hours for Liquid Beverages Inc. doing business as Wine and Spirits Depot. Chris.
To the, um, there's a, um, the letter in the packet, uh, request, um, the law does allow the hours Monday through Saturday to be from eight AM to eleven PM and on Sundays from ten AM to eleven PM. The prior licensee did not have those hours. So when, when a license was transferred over, was transferred with the hours that were on the license. So they've requested that these hours, which are within the law and are, and some of the other licensees have them and some don't. Every, every license here is a little different. I was looking at it with Tracy. It's just, I think just the historical pattern, some places are open different hours. The fact that they're authorized to open these hours, it's something that have to be open these hours as for them. So, and Jim looked at it, if you've got his, I think, uh, I've got memo, I think that explains that the board is authorized to do this. And I believe the principals are in the audience here, if you have any questions.
Yes, C Le Blank, not sure who's here, but can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you. I'm with you.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you? Thanks for being here.
Sure, no problem.
So anything you want to add to this request?
Uh, no, no, really just, you know, as it was mentioned, the issue was just that there appears to be a, some kind of a clerical issue with transferring the hours that were on Bruce's license already. And then when the license was printed out for, for Liquid Beverage, it was printed up with incorrect hours, which appear to be on bonus hours. So we're really just looking to get the, the original hours put back on there, which were, as, as Tracy I'm sure has mentioned, was, you know, Monday through Saturday, eight AM to eleven PM and Sunday, uh, ten AM to eleven PM. And not necessarily that we're open at eight AM during the week, but you know, that's what they really should be as, as far as Bruce's license was concerned. So, but that's all I really have to contribute to that.
Okay. Corey, I saw your hand first.
Yeah, I just, someone mentioned a memo from Jim. I didn't have it in my packet. I didn't see it in my email. I'm comfortable with this request, but it would be, if Chris or somebody could summarize what that memo says or just read it, that would at least put it in the record a little better.
I read it, I'd be taken up, I'd be like Jim Powers. So in summary, it says that the law authorizes hours eight to eleven during the week. And that eleven, on, on Sundays, there's an as-of right, but the boards can go till ten. It's not as-of right till ten, but other, Curtis, I think, has ten on Sundays. So the prior owner licensee didn't have ten, but the board has the right to go to ten. And again, at, at least Curtis has ten, according, I was just looking at the license with Tracy. So that, that's really the biggest change to go to ten on Sunday as opposed to eleven. The other ones are out. There, there was a misprint on the license, which had it going till one in the morning, which is not legal. Or I mean, I think just what, what happened somewhere in the, in the typing, like a one fell off and it went from eleven to one. And I don't think anyone picked up on it until now. That said, they did have later opening hours because they just never opened earlier. So they didn't, they didn't need them. And some licensees have them and some don't. But again, eight AM to eleven PM is the official hours of the law. So that's the normal issuance hours. And they don't have to operate during that as, as the, uh, just mentioned. But I think the biggest change really, and this, some of the board has to vote either way, is to go to ten on Sunday. And again, Curtis has that same authorization.
And again, just as a, you know, in general, we want to make sure our businesses are being treated equally in terms of the hours they're allowed to sell. I mean, they get to pick within those parameters, but we want to make sure people are being treated fairly across the board. Diane.
Yeah, and I'm just clarifying that going to ten means that Sunday, they have the ability to open at ten as opposed to the end of the day.
Correct. They're allowed to be open till eleven, actually.
Yep.
Yeah, they, they would be able to open at ten if they, if they chose, which is, which is legal. And the, the state changed a few years ago to allow you to open at ten.
Got it. Just wanted to clarify, it was on the beginning end of the day and not the end.
All right. I'm, I mean, I'm comfortable making a motion unless.
Yeah, go for it, Corey.
Yep. So I move that the select board amends the license to Liquid Beverage Inc. to include the hours as follows, Monday through Saturday from between the hours of eight AM and eleven PM and Sunday between the hours of ten AM and eleven PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Jack, great night.
Corey Evans, aye?
Yeah, double die.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. All right. Thank you. That is done. And just a reminder too, I believe if anyone's available the next few days, Tracy's gonna need us to sign a few licenses with at least three of our signatures. So just a reminder to stop into town hall if you can. All right. Last area here is the Red Lion has several extension of hours requests. I know that we've looked at the several dates on there. Jean, I think I know what you're about to say.
I'm just gonna recuse myself on this portion.
No, that's fine. Okay. And Tony, I believe you're coming in. Maybe.
Can you hear me? Hi, good evening.
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, great.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to be here.
So we have seen several of these requests on there and I know you guys have been busy trying to get events rescheduled. Do you want to just give us an overview here for everyone to hear?
Yeah, so pretty much this is the older requests for the entire twenty twenty-two. I think there are nine. And all their requests are for the cave. So these are extensions that pretty much after the wedding, the guests, they want to have after-party downstairs in the cave. So as you know, the cave, there is no windows, there is no doors. It, it's a perfect place that the guests, they can have after-party.
I think most of us have seen the area. Okay. What issues or questions or concerns do we have about this? Corey, and then maybe Diane, you might be trying to speak.
I'm trying to find my raised hand, sorry.
My, my question, I, I went through these dates and I just looked through it, but just for confirmation, all these dates are for Sunday evening into Monday morning. Is that correct?
All there in Sunday, yes, after their weddings.
Okay. Diane.
Um, ju- just clarification, if possible, on what the, what the current hours are for the cave on those days.
The current hours are until ten PM.
Okay, so this is extending on nine separate Sundays through the year from ten PM until one AM for the cave.
Correct.
Which has limited capacity too.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And again, we are starting to see, and I know it's not just Red Lion that's dealing with this, but a lot of weddings and events are happening on days that aren't Saturday. Especially with rescheduling of things from the past couple of years with COVID. So I know there are a lot of weddings happening on Fridays and Sundays and this is something we need to be aware of.
And, and, and usually on Fridays and Saturdays, we have, we have hours until twelve, until one AM. Just nowadays, it's until ten.
Right. Jack?
So the, on Saturdays, you, your hours are till when?
Till one AM.
Till one AM. So it looks to me like you're almost putting a policy of anybody has a wedding on Sunday that you're gonna have, you know, you're gonna have the bar open until one AM of the following day of Monday.
Right.
I mean, nine requests. Yeah.
That, yeah, they're not, that's what I mean. They're nine, nine requests. What, what is the business rationale? I mean, we're looking at, when, when you start talking about it, starts at four thirty, is that when the after-party starts?
No, usually the after-party, it's after ten o'clock. So they have a wedding from, let's say, five o'clock until ten. And after the wedding, they have after-party.
So when you say like on eleven six, twenty twenty-two, five PM, is that the start of the wedding?
That's the start of the wedding, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, these are evening weddings.
Yeah, that's what I'm just trying to, to figure out because otherwise it's a pretty long happy hour.
Yeah, I know.
No, there's the wedding, then the reception and then the after-party.
Well, I have, I am uncomfortable going after midnight. I don't think we, you know, on, on Sunday night, I, I, I think that we're, we're starting to see it increasing late night drinking in the, in the village, in the village. We're, we're starting to see it increasing late night drinking in the, in the village, and the village has not historically been a late night, uh, nightclub mecca. So, this causes me some concern.
Okay, Diane?
Um, I just have a general question about the, the after party, um, not having been to a wedding in a while, um, i- is that typically, I, I mean. Are, are people staying over at the Red Lion Inn, typically the bridal parties?
Yeah, typical, the bridal party is correct.
Yeah, you know, I, I think just, just to Jack's point, um, I'm, I'm supportive of this, and I think that the, the, the nine times, I really appreciate looking at that ahead of time and having. You know, nine Sundays out of fifty-two is a very reasonable ask, uh, but obviously it is, and we're gonna be talking about this, um, in, in other agenda items later, but. You know, there is an impact, as we all know, on, on the neighborhood, and, and it is a, a dense, densely populated, um, spot. Um, so just putting that in there for the record, I know people have concerns about the, the general, you know, commotion that people leaving an event can cause. Um, so, uh, um, you know, I just asked for you to be sen- as sensitive to that as possible, and. Um, but again, I, I don't think this is an unreasonable request, given that they're, you know, relatively, um, few, and on that, only on that one night, when they're going to one. Other nights, which are likely Friday and Saturdays.
And also the end, so these are, the requests are being done. Uh, or these events, they've been scheduled a couple of years ago, so my goal right now, it's to minimize as much as we can, and. You will see in, uh, twenty twenty-three, they will have probably minimum of these requests, so all these events have been, uh, yes, uh, uh. Been organized a year or a couple of years ago.
It's a lot of rescheduling, I know, because of the pandemic, and I think all of us are mostly okay too with this venue in particular, because it is literally a cave. Right, like it's not loud when people are down there, and it's, there isn't much, much disruption when people are down there, I think it's more about people leaving and making sure. People are safe and, you know, not driving after drinking and that kind of stuff, but I also, I think the venue itself is very good for an after party with minimal disruption to the town.
And you're absolutely right, and that's how we have our event managers, so pretty much we es- escort all the guests to, uh, to the buses, and. The buses are parked in front of the hotel or on the side of the street to. Make sure then we minimize the disruption of the, of, um, our citizens there.
Yeah, and, and, and of course, the buses aren't running, um, yes, yes, is the right answer. Um, I guess my concern is, yeah, if they were previously booked and nine, but I, I think that if we were to see more weddings coming in and more requests. I think that, that I think probably that would spark a, a much larger discussion. Which I don't think the town would be very happy to see it as a policy going forward. For the Red Lion, for the cave to turn into a one o'clock license.
Okay, Diane, your hand's still up.
Um, I was gonna make a motion, but I, but thank you for the clarification on the, um, on the, uh, that these are rescheduled, because I think that is important to, to know. Um, unless Corey has a question, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I, I, I was looking at the license, the last version I have, and I was just a little bit unclear, I mean, I guess. Because things have changed names, so my apologies, but, but in the version that I'm reading. The, the, the basement room is supposed to be open Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays only, between eleven AM to one AM, is that not correct? Tony?
That's correct, yeah.
That is correct, so it's typically.
So typically Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
And Sundays, yeah.
Does that answer your question, Corey, or do you have a follow-up?
No, it does, I just, I, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm, I've shared some of my colleagues' discomfort with this, um, you know, I think. You know, I, I, I appreciate the Red Lion being a, um, you know, a, a great location, um, you know, for a wedding and all those things, but. At the same time, I am sensitive to, you know, I live on North Main Street, I'm sensitive to, to, to drinking and driving, I know that other parts of the Red Lion are open till one AM. So there's still already, you know, places to, to drink and, and, and party. Uh, I just, I worry that, you know, we're just, we're playing a lot of averages here, and by increasing it. Yeah, we're just increasing, then there's a line somewhere, and I'm not, I'm not saying I know where that line is, but this, this I think is on the side that makes me a little uncomfortable, when it's. It's nine times, I mean, I, I know nine out of fifty-two is small, but, I mean, it is, you know, twenty-five per twenty percent or whatever, I mean, we can, we can slice that a few different ways if we want to, so. Um, I, I'm not sure I'm very comfortable with this, as I'm going through it.
Okay, I actually think that keeping a wedding and a reception and an after party at the same venue, a lot of times keeps people safer. And more contained and not traveling from place to place, I think that if we, you know, we didn't approve this, there would have to be an after party in another town. And that could also possibly cause more commotion of an entire wedding, having to leave our town, go to Situate or Hingham, where the places are open a little later. I'm not, I don't necessarily think that not approving this would make anyone safer. Diane?
Yeah, no, I, and I, you know, I, I sense the concern as well, but I, I do think, and, you know, as Tony articulated, that. This is not something most people will probably not be having Sunday night weddings, hopefully, once the catch-up from the last couple of years, so I, I, I think. The sentiment, obviously, of all of us is that, let's consider this as an exception, which is one of the reasons we asked to. Handle this, this way, um, over the past year and a half, instead of just blanketing, um, you know, every. Venue within the Red Lion Inn complex, if you will, um, into, you know, some, just fitting a, you know, a, a. Square peg into a round hole, or whatever the, whatever the analogy is, so I am gonna make a motion that we approve extending the, um. Hours, uh, for the liquor license in the cave at the Red Lion Inn on the following dates until one o'clock in the morning. Um, if through, uh, twenty twenty-two, it's June nineteenth. Uh, July tenth, July thirty-first, September eighteenth, October ninth, October sixteenth, October twenty-third, November sixth, and December eighteenth.
Do we have a second? No second from either of you, I'll second it. Okay. I'm gonna second the motion for a vote. Roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Ah, boy, I'll tell you, uh, you know, my long term, because, only because these were already booked. But going forward, I, I think we ought to send an eleven o'clock on Sunday nights for anything going on further. I, I, I just don't think that we want Cohasset to be a late night. Partying spot, eleven o'clock addresses your concern, uh, Carrie, that people might leave and then have to come back.
Are you making a motion, Jack, or are you just?
No, I'm discussing it, I'm discussing it.
Okay.
Um, so I'm not making a motion, I'm just assigning statement, if you will, but, you know, um, Jack Creighton does vote I.
Okay.
For Evan's name, I can't, sorry.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you, Tony, thanks for being here.
Thank you so much for your help and support.
All right, we appreciate it, good luck with all your rescheduled weddings.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that.
All right, moving on to boards and committees, we have one appointment for the Open Space and Rec Committee. This is to fill an unexpired term until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and Connie Apshar has. Expressed interest in doing this, and thank you, Connie, for that, do we have any?
I have to move that we appoint Connie Ashard to the Open Space Committee.
Okay, that was fast, Jack, all right, do we have a second?
Second, fantastic, I'm thrilled she's doing.
Thank you, Connie, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, I.
For Evan's eye?
Jean Haley Dipple Die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I, thank you, Connie. We very much appreciate your service, all right. Exciting update from Alternative Energy on the microgrid, I know this has been something we've been discussing a lot this year, Tanya. Always good to see your face.
Thank you, I'm a little in the dark right now.
That's all right, we'll take you anyway.
I'm gonna put the, um, PowerPoint slide, PowerPoint slide presentation app, this update on the microgrid and the brick grant, and, um, we have just exciting stuff to share, and. It's the beginning of a potential action item.
All right.
All agree, so I'm gonna share, oops, I'm disabled.
Hold on, let me try to, hold on. Try it now, Tanya.
Okay. All right, I think you can probably see, I'm gonna do it slideshow.
Yep.
All right, great, this, this will be very efficient and quick, all right. Because we've already been updating you on where we are, so we're gonna give you an update on what the final Cohasset microgrid project submitted to the Brick Grant. Um, opportunity looks like, talk a little bit about the Brick Grant proposal, because, uh, we were able to make some changes. Based on their changes that are new to this year, and I think that gives us more comfort in the town as well about potentially proceeding. And then we'll talk about the cost of the alternatives, because this process has allowed us to understand more how the town could go about improving. Our power supply, and, and we continue to believe that a microgrid. Uh, is the, with, with a FEMA grant is the most cost-effective way to proceed, and you'll see why, and, um, the process itself continues to pay dividends. Uh, whether or not this goes forward, whether or not we get the award from FEMA, whether or not if we get the award, the town decides not to, um, pay their share, or whatever that might be after we get grants. Doesn't matter, uh, the process has been valuable, so it is incredible to think, uh, not too long ago, we were at the beginning of this.
I know, it feels like a long time, but not really either.
I know, and so here we are, uh, we submitted our proposal to MEMA. Uh, um, back in, I guess, December, maybe early January, and we worked with MEMA to finalize it. And, um, they submitted it, MEMA submitted it to FEMA on, um, January twenty-sixth. We don't know how they ranked our proposal compared to the others that they submitted, but by the end, I think they were a lot more excited than the beginning, and, um, they did give us. Uh, the benefit of the doubt with respect to a lot of cutting-edge things that we were pushing, that they weren't necessarily aware of. So FEMA is now reviewing our proposal as part of the national competition, and we will, um, we'll hear probably not until June, um, the summer, I think. Maybe they'll call us for some clarification on how we did the benefit cost analysis, I'm not sure, um, but we'll see, and, and again. We, we may not be showing enough benefits to the costs to get any interest. But it has been worth the journey, so what did we ultimately, um, submit? We went and got better price estimates for the equipment, NLX, uh, Amoresco gave us some cost estimates, and as a result, we, um. Had higher prices, and so reconfigured the system to try to make it more cost-effective. And the rotating generator is eight megawatts instead of seven, and the battery storage at six critical facilities is four point five megawatts instead of. I think we originally were looking at seven, so we skinnyed down the batteries, we slightly increased the rotating generator. But generally, it's more or less the same, um, type of approach, uh, this, most certainly the same footprint, the same thought of integrating solar, which is not in this proposal. But integrating solar, that we can find good locations to install that solar to help us. Uh, it is not needed from National Grid's perspective, they give solar no credit for the microgrid, the rotating generator and the batteries are needed. The solar is in their mind, sort of, um, icing on the cake, cherry on top type of stuff, but. I think it's also important for us, and I think it could be very valuable, and they pay for themselves. So we continue to look for ways to build out the solar for the town's load. And we also are looking at whether or not there might be some community solar opportunities as well. Um, when we give you an update later, I think you already know, the Community Aggregation Plan has been approved, yay. So the town will have the opportunity to move forward with that, that is completely separate from this, this is physical, that is financial. Um, associated with a lower cost that town people can obtain through aggregation, and we can do both, we can do both, so, um, that's what we're going for. We talked about the letters of support that we had received last time, National Grid, of course, is supporting this, working very closely with us, and I can't thank them enough. But since we spoke, we got two additional letters of support from Amoresco, who's been talking with us about solar, and NLX. Who does a lot of microgrid, they're microgrid manager, they do storage, the, these two gave us some good cost estimates. And NLX called this something along lines of, quote, "the most innovative and impactful microgrid project that they've ever seen."
Wow.
So, um, it is very exciting, I think, for not just us, but for the potential. Folks who would be working with us on this going forward, so these partnerships are great, right, they're great, they're required as part of the Brick Grant, they show foundational strength and applicability elsewhere. And we're very pleased about the partnerships that we've been able to generate through this process. Okay, so the Brick Grant proposal, so this, this was sort of like, got slipped in this year. Uh, phased projects, FEMA has done phased projects in the context of other grants, but never in Brick Grant approach. And what they realized, because they were asking for microgrid projects, that there might be some complicated projects, and that there could be some funding upfront for phase one. To do a further study to finalize the design, finalize the costs. To understand how those costs are creating benefits, and so, um, we jumped on this, and MEMA, again, was. Uh, interested to find out this was happening, but as you see, uh, this was updated on their website, January tenth of twenty twenty-two, like this was like real-time changing. So we changed the, um, proposal to be a phased project, and we asked for a million dollars upfront. To be able to help us study this more, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that, we'll, we'll show in a second, would go to, um, National Grid. And two hundred and fifty thousand would be for the town to go through the procurement process, get solid numbers, and, and even potentially look at, um. Starting to bleed into phase four. That, this, we found, we, we learned some new information, which we're gonna talk about, but this upfront. Um, phase one part of the study, this, this, what you're seeing here is not the Brick Grant, this is our original microgrid framework for May of twenty twenty. But I think that this phase one study would be able to help us not just understand the costs and benefits. In more detail and with less uncertainty around what we proposed, but also allow us to look at some other investments that could be applied town-wide. To, um, improve our power supply, and I'll talk about what some of those are in a minute. So the phase one study is not just to, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's on what we proposed, but can also provide some benefits to the entire town. With respect to understanding how we might be able to improve the power supply, and how might we do this, well, in the course of talking to National Grid. And this is part of what we're talking about, what we've learned, if you think about where we were a year ago, even six months ago versus now, it's incredible. But we learned that eighty-five percent of the outages in town are due to trees, we learned that, um, the vast majority of the times when our. We have outages is during storms, high winds, and, um, we are going to, as part of the lead-up to this, do a sort of social media, um. Project where we ask people to send us pictures of trees growing through the lines, anybody can drive down Sawyer Street, um, it's really bad on Pond Street. And it, it's really bad everywhere, the trees are just growing through the lines, this is a problem, and so upgrading our system includes trimming back the trees. But there's another thing, this is existing wire that's on a lot of our core system. Um, it's not all of our core system, but a lot of our core system, this is so old-fashioned, this is exposed wire, bare wire, if a tree branch just even skims it, it causes a fault. So a lot of our blue sky day outages, um, occur because we have these types of distribution system wires. The tree wire, this is what it looks like, you can see, it's much more protected, it's got an aluminum alloy, uh, wiring, and then it's wrapped with some semiconductor polyethylene, and then some. High-density polyethylene, so that if a tree branch hits it, it's not a problem, if a squirrel goes running on it, it's not a problem, you don't get these faults, and the squirrels stay alive. Um, unlike if they're running along. So. This is one thing that we learned, and it is embedded in the microgrid project, um, but this could be a benefit to the whole town. And it's much more cost-effective, um, it, it's very cost-effective, but it's still expensive, this would be a couple hundred thousand dollars per mile to rewire, um, Jean.
Um. Isn't this National Grid's responsibility?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, talk about that at the end in my, you know.
Without paying anything for it. Just to, okay, okay.
Yep.
I'll tell them my you. You know where I'm what I'm thinking, Tanya.
Absolutely. And I guess just to make sure you know what I'm thinking. Let's keep going through the process. Let's keep getting the information. And at the end of the day, the reality is if if National Grid can make the investment and get it rolled into a socialized rate with a rate of return, they will do that, right? It's just a question of them getting the approval. So if there's a microgrid tariff, that might be a way for them to do that. Their position right now is not in their budget. Not, you know, therefore this is special treatment. We did that the costs and the benefits don't pan out in their studies, and so they shouldn't do it. But their cost benefit analysis is different than FEMA's. So we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that at the end, but I would encourage us to just keep going through the process and getting the information. And it may be like, look, National Grids are not going to say no to a socialized rate inclusion if they can get it. It's just a question of us being able to help them get to that point. And we, at the end of the day, have veto power as well, which we'll talk about. So we continue to have a free option by going forward. The second is tree trimming. So you can see the trees growing through the lines. And obviously, it's expensive to put somebody in a bucket truck and trim the trees. And the cost of just doing some trim back is around $16,000. If it's an aggressive trim back, it's around $35,000 per mile. And if it's a ground to sky clearing where they cut down the tree, it would be $60,000 per mile. So you're probably next thinking, okay, well, how many miles do we have in Cohasset? And according to Massachusetts survey that was done a couple of years ago, we have around 50 miles of road. Not all would have to have the tree trimming, but you know, you can estimate with that. Yes, Diane. Just a little bit of a snarky comment, which is, you know, how much does it cost whenever the half the town is out of out of electricity and they've got bucket trucks sitting around for two days, waiting for the wind to die down to put us all back online. Totally, totally, totally agree. And by the way, this we we because of the higher costs that came in on the equipment for the microgrid, we had to try to figure out how to get more benefits. And so I asked them, what would happen if you trim the trees throughout the entire microgrid area, including on the laterals? And their estimated effectiveness on this is around a 10% improvement in a decrease in outages. So it's it's a low cost, but not, you know, it's effective, but not highly effective. Mainly because we've got trees so close to the lines and those trees are on private property.
Yeah.
Good. And people don't like to cut down trees, especially when it's on their land. And so this is our what this is just the reality of our problem. And we didn't realize the magnitude of it when we started. But Jean, you have your hand up.
One question I get a lot, Tanya, and I know you had this in a prior presentation, and I apologize if you're getting to it, but the cost of underground wires per month.
Oh, my gosh. We're going to end with that because we got more pricing on that. And we're going to actually put dollars on that.
Oh, we can't wait to see that.
I know, I know, I know. Because everybody asks about that. So yeah, so this is the cost of the tree trip. So these are very cost effective solutions. The entire town would benefit to have this done. And if 75% of it could be covered by FEMA and 25% of it covered by fill in the blank. And and again, this would be so in the zone of National Grids. They should be doing this, right? So that would be great. That would be great. And if it incentivized the DPU to to allow this to be put into rates because it's only 25% versus 100%, that'd be even better. So again, I think we got some potential convergence happening. So but a phase one study could allow us to examine these solutions for the entire town in addition to what we had proposed and getting better cost estimates for the microgrid. So this is the phase one cost estimates. The National Grid Engineering Study, which is 750,000 focused on the microgrid, and we would have them also look at the tree trimming and the wires and the effectiveness of doing that for the whole town, even the parts that aren't part of the microgrid. To be honest, why not put in three switches and just let the entire town island off with these wires and the you can see where I'm going here, right? The original phase four uni grid may end up being the most cost effective. It's just National Grid was not ready to go there yet. So maybe this is just one little step instead of the big step we asked them to make. Or maybe they're still going to say no, but whatever, we can, we can work with them. And then the procurement, which allows us to, you know, look at hiring an engineer, get specific design and procurement and all that. Jean.
This for a townwide or just for the existing these costs?
So right, this is the phase one. And the the goal of the phase one study is to do a more detailed analysis of what was submitted to FEMA. And the reason is, so that's the downtown microgrid. And the reason is because if we do that detailed study and still show the benefits to cost ratio at a level that FEMA can fund, then we don't have to resubmit. We can just
Okay, that's
go forward. So that's the purpose of this phase one, phase two. Now that is what FEMA is looking for. If as part of this process, you know, we say to National Grid, look, we're getting higher costs. Can you look at what the whole thing would look like if we put tree wire everywhere and trimmed the trees? And because those are the lower cost additions, we might get enough benefits to cover those costs under the FEMA calculation. Now, you know, it just that that's how this is going to play out. Right? Do you see what we're trying to do here? We couldn't put in a whole mini grid because we haven't looked at that.
Yeah.
But as part of phase one, we can let it seep into benefits for the whole town.
We see that strategy.
Yes. Again, baby steps get you to a bigger distance.
Yep.
After a lot of those baby steps. So the this would be the cost benefits. The focus would be on what we had submitted, but because we sort of started to realize that tree trimming and tree wire are creating a lot of the benefits in the downtown microgrid. Which by the way, again, remember, the purpose of the downtown microgrid first and foremost is to provide power to 80% of our critical infrastructure of the town. Right? 50% of the residents benefit from that. But that said, you know, what about everybody else? And the pain, you know, those other people who are not benefiting partially benefit, maybe they pay, maybe they don't. Who pays for it is a different story. It's just what is the effective approach? So this is how we phased it. Phase one, we'd be able to help look at benefits to the entire town. And that could be part of this. Now, no commitment on the town. There continue to be a lot of go no go decision points. In fact, these were asked for by FEMA. The first one we passed, we passed go. And we did not get $200, but hopefully we will. And we passed go because we submitted it to Mima and Mima submitted the FEMA. And we had conversations with Chris Senior before we pushed send, and he felt comfortable. There were enough off ramps that we could move forward. As well as the benefits that were being shown. So the next one is a go no go, whether or not there's going to be an article for a phase one funding to be approved. Talk about what that could look like. And then the next would be if the town's going to fund it or not fund it for a phase one. And again, that's $1 million as we just talked through. And then there's another go no go after we go through phase one about whether or not we submit the the proposal to FEMA. If we decide we don't want to as a town, we don't, and it's done. We do not have to reimburse FEMA for that. As long as you know, it's there's a clear reason why they don't want to be misled and just have us get the study. But you know, clearly, we are interested in pursuing this. And then whether or not there's funding, go no go number five and a town vote at town meeting. So you know, it's very deliberate, very diligent, very much what municipalities feel comfortable with and what I feel comfortable with. Jack.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, you said that they go go number two, we spend a million dollars.
Or so the go number two would be whether or not even put an article before
But three is a million dollars.
Well, three is we pay the million dollars subject to, for example, getting funding from FEMA. Or we set it up as a match grant. So it's not a commitment. It's a commitment to front a million dollars, knowing that it only gets spent if we get awarded the phase one reimbursement of 75% of that from FEMA.
So it's a $250,000 cost.
Up to 250,000. I say up to because we're still looking at state funding. We're still looking at National Grid. We're still looking at vendors. We're looking at other ways to try to reduce the towns upfront.
But it's still a million dollars that we expect to get $750,000 of it back from FEMA.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And the timing is, you know, if we don't do it at this town meeting, we have to wait until October or December, you know, it's just the timing doesn't work. Well, so given the phase one, it's a smaller bite, but it's still, we take it to the town, we have the discussion. And this is what we're going to discuss. So the alternatives. Okay, so this was the chart that you saw last time. And it's sort of generally ranked underground wires and all these other approaches that we've identified. Vegetation management is a fancy word for tree trimming. And the the tree wire is not in here, but it would be frankly, we don't know how effective it is or not like this. This is it's really not that effective unless it's done in conjunction with other things. But the vegetation management, you know, that that could be pretty effective. Hingham did it an aggressive tree trimming program, and it's going to last them 10 years and their outage just went down.
Yeah.
Again, this is National Grid's job. Nobody else can get in a bucket truck and trim trees around wires. Nobody, nobody should. So again, we have, we're armed with more information than we have. But the microgrid with FEMA money becomes incredibly cost effective and lower cost and high effectiveness. So so what does all of this mean? Well, I put some round numbers on this based on the information we've been getting. Everybody's favorite. Can't we put the wires underground? Oh, my God, that'd be so nice. It's highly effective.
Wow, that is that is a high cost.
It is. Again, it's six to eight million dollars per mile because we live on ledge. Six to eight million dollars per mile. It would run through the I can pretty much run through the streets. So you have to dig up the streets. You have to dig down. You have to fill it back up. You know, it's just it is. There's no conduit, but we should be thinking about putting conduit down just in case. That it's a lot. It's it's six to eight million dollars per mile, and we have 50 miles that would need to be done. Yes, two participants raised their hands. So Diane. No, just to add on to that is that, you know, so many of our roads too are private ways. So, you know, we might want to at some point look at what the public ways would cost. In other words, how many miles would could get removed from this ultimate cost? I believe it's not going to make a material difference. And, you know, if you have Jerusalem Road and not Jerusalem Road Drive with underground wires, what's the point kind of thing, but
One point, Diane.
But it to me, it just seems like it's not even possible logistically, let alone financially. Yeah. So that I would say that's my estimate of underground core wires, which is the bottom one. That it'd be about half, not not the public versus private, but what are the roads that the core circuits are running on? Right? And I'd say that's about half, maybe maybe a little bit less. But the problem is you put it underground and then it has to come back above ground to go into the neighborhoods. And the neighborhoods also have trees growing through the wires. And if you want to then take it down and have it underground everywhere, part of the reason why it's 300 to 400 million is it's $10,000 per house to take it from underground into the house. So you just, we weren't built that way. California was, you know, a lot of the communities in California was built after electricity had been around for 80 years, and they just went underground as part of the community development. We did not have that luxury. So going back and trying to renovate, to put it all underground is just an expensive proposition, no matter how you measure it. But it's effective. It's highly effective. As we know, Jerusalem Road is underground and and we saw from that outage map, they don't have a lot of outages. A new transmission line, I'm not even going to price it. I mean, that would be around two to $4 million per mile. What town is going to let us run an extension cord from ISO New England into our town? Honestly, right? There would, there would have to be an imminent domain. It would have to run on an existing right of way that National Grid has. And, you know, our two feeder lines come from one transmission substation. It's just, that's a part of our problem too. So it's just very difficult to do. I and it'd be around this 100 to 400 million dollar range. It's almost not even worth trying to estimate. Um, the next layer, very effective would be a microgrid without FEMA residential batteries. We could pop batteries for two to three days of power in every every single house, treat it like a virtual power plant. And it wouldn't help the six day outages, but it would, you know, definitely improve power for everybody. 30 to 50 million. I mean, that's expensive. And everybody could put backup generation on for $10,000 or less, you know, that when there's 3,000 houses in the town. So you start to be looking at a 30 to 50 million dollar. Is that the most effective way to do this? Doesn't mean we're not going to try. This is, we talked to N L X about this. We said, look, find a competitor to the Tesla wall who wants to show that their batteries can be used as a virtual power plant. And we're ready, like we can, we we could do that. And there might be ways to do it. Municipalization, we've already talked about. There's two types of municipalization, right? We could have a municipal light company that just owns generation. Batteries, the rotating generator, we could do that. And that would be no threat to National Grid because they cannot own generation. Or we could be a municipality that buys the distribution lines off of National Grid. I hope everybody now realizes it's not going to help us without more money. It to be effective, it's going to require more investment along the lines of what we're talking about. And then the last part, vegetation management, you know, again, just looking at the taken to the mid to the high range for effectiveness. You're looking at 10 to 15 million to do the whole town. But in FEMA land, that may be affected, like that might be a cost effective approach. And the community renewables. You know, they pay for themselves, but they shut down during an outage unless you have a microgrid to let them, you know, put their power into the system. And the microgrid with FEMA money is what we've been talking about. And with FEMA, where we're coming in at eight to 10 million, and it's very effective, 90% reduction and 90, 90 to 95% reduction for anybody connected to the backbone, and then a now 60% reduction in outages for anybody who's on the laterals or the spurs connected to that. So that's, you know, our gut was microgrid with FEMA money would be the most effective, cost effective approach. This is generally how it all plays out. You know, does anybody want to spend eight to 10 million dollars? No, especially not when we, you know, feel that this is a National Grid responsibility. But this this again, it gives us an opportunity to go after some grant money. And as we showed last time, and we're going to finalize some numbers on this, that eight to 10 million that the town would effectively front pretty much can pay for itself. So the equipment that we would have in the town for the microgrid can sell outside of outages can sell into the market and could offset that price. So ultimately, what would it cost the town? A couple million on a net present value basis. But there's obviously upfront cash that would have to be paid. Jean.
The vegetation management, isn't that the thing that enables the microgrid grid to be a successful project? Because if trees are still falling down everywhere, then it doesn't matter if on the regular grid or the microgrid. So is is the 10 to 15 million on top in addition to the microgrid? How are we dealing in in your scenario with the pre issue?
Yep. So that vegetation management is a standalone. With the microgrid, we do have tree trimming for the areas around the core and in the what was submitted, tree trimming in the rest of the communities that are connected to the core. So the microgrid does have tree trimming, vegetation management, and tree wire in it. But that alone does not make it as effective as it is. The other thing that makes it effective is the ability to island off and self-supply. So the generator and the batteries mean that when we have the long-duration outages, because something happened in Wampatuck Park or in Situate or Norwell or upstream from us, the microgrid can still operate.
Good point.
Good thing. Yeah, I mean, it's National Grid estimated around seventy percent of the outages we have are from trees that fall down in coacid. Thirty percent is because of trees or things that happen to their wires upstream. And so if we can't, we can address one, and it's going to have some effectiveness, but our long-duration outages, usually what happens is trees fall on both places. And they spend a lot of time, they have, historically, I think, everybody saw how many bucket trucks they had parked in the stop-and-shop parking lot of coacid in October. But traditionally, they've worked on getting that line upstream up before they came to us. Now, they're sort of doing things simultaneously when they can, but the trees are falling all over the place. And the long-duration outages tend to be because there's a lot of work being done everywhere else. And as you know, there were people in town who had six days, they had no power for six days in October, six days.
I know. This is Yeah, and Tanya, again, most people have said it seems like we lost so many trees that were about ready to fall, that that's why we lucked out in our most recent storm. That it was windy and it was bad, but most of the trees that were about to fall had already fallen in October.
Yeah, and well, and remember, we had a lot of rain, so the ground was very saturated. So it was ready. Corey.
Yeah, I was just gonna just tee off of what my colleague Healy Tippold said about the price for vegetation management. So basically, by rolling it into the whole project, we can get federal, we can get grant money for that part of the project. So it's it's either we do it ourselves, National Grid does it, but eventually they charge us, because again, where's the money coming from? Or in this scenario, we actually get, you know, somebody else to 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 throw us a bunch of cash for that type of work. Is that a good?
That's exactly right. And let me tell you, when we added in the vegetation management in the residential areas that were not connected directly to the backbone, but were laterals, there was, because we have such bad outages and the way that FEMA measures benefits is the benefits are greater, the worse your situation is. So by putting the tree trimming in an area that had on average two point five days person outage days per year, it had a huge impact. So even though it was only a ten percent increase, decrease in outages, the price was low. That ten percent decrease was effective, and the benefits in the FEMA benefit cost analysis were able to show great benefit for that alone. I would have had no idea if we didn't have to go through that exercise. So that's why I'm feeling like this phase one which could allow us to look at, okay, i- if we can even put the tree trimming in, right? This is a whole nother question. I don't even know if FEMA will fund it. Like, they just might say, yeah, nice try. We're not doing it, even though it's in our hazard mitigation plan. Our FEMA hazard mitigation plan says it.
Yeah.
But again, you know, no nothing ventured, nothing gained. And so we put it in and we have it. And if they say, yeah, this is great, we'll pay for those tree trimming upfront, and then you pay for it on an ongoing basis. Then my thought is, knowing how their benefit cost analysis works, let's do it for the whole town and get seventy-five percent of it paid for. And and possibly argue National Grid needs to cover the rest of it and socialize it. I think Jean saw where I was going with this. So this brings it full circle to the strategy. Any questions before I talk about next steps?
I just love how pragmatic you've been the whole time on this, Tanya, on this whole committee, seriously, because you have to be when we're dealing with things like National Grid and FEMA and MEMA. There's so much strategy that goes into this, and I really respect your diplomacy.
Well, thank you. Thank you. It has tried my patience at times.
Sure.
Do. But we we've made great progress. Okay, so look, the town article can be subject to funding by FEMA, it can be specific to this project, subject to funding by FEMA. This language that's here is generic. And this comes from Buxbury. You had a specific FEMA project that had a specific FEMA project that they wanted to get funding for, but they just wanted to generalize matching grant funds as a general proposition. I I just, I, you know, I, again, this is your call above my pay grade, how you want to present it to the town, if you want to present it to a town, this is a go-no-go decision, number two. Do we want to ask the town in advance to be ready to fund basically the upfront million subject to an award that would reimburse at least seven hundred and fifty thousand of that? So that that's a longer discussion for you, but I just wanted to bring it around to, that's where we are with respect to this process, and you saw, you know, why we would need to present it at the Springtown meeting. And why it's nice, a nicer bite size of one million versus the total project of what did it come out? Like thirty-six million, I think, upfront costs. So where the town's share would be nine million, you know, again, I think this first phase has a lot of benefits to the town as a whole. And it helps us sort of get to on the power supply issue. Just it's that final bit of information that we need to understand what all the options are. And one of the options is always do nothing. Like, welcome to coacid, buy your own backup generator. And if you can't afford it, too bad, we're working on it.
Seems like most people in town do not like that option, and I don't blame them. But yeah, that is our option right now.
That's what we're doing. No decision is a decision. I I mean, like, like, let's be honest about this.
Correct.
No decision is a decision. And that is not even in my chart because we were not tasked to look at it.
We don't want a no decision slide. That's, we don't need that.
So anyway, so that, so that's where that is. Ongoing communications and outreach, like, complete the application, that's done. That's a huge victory for this town. Finalize potential partners, we've done that outreach and got Ameresco and NLX to write a supporting letter, and and that's complete and a victory for this town. And we're continuing to talk to them about that. They they're so innovative. We're continuing to talk to them about the batteries in every home, virtual power plant, for example. Talking to them about other things we might be able to do, electric buses as a demonstration project. There's going to be a meeting between NLX and the business office of the school to talk about what they can offer with the one electric bus, one to two electric buses with the grant funding they've received. So, you know, there's just, again, this whole process has created a lot of branching opportunities for us. So it's been great. We've gotten those independent quotes, we've talked to the board commission, the school committee. I know there are people from the water commission that are watching and like watching us with a nice stiff drink on in hand and and try not to choke when they see our price tag at the end. But again, I think this pays for itself at the end of the day, but we won't ask the town to believe that. We'll come in with prices and estimates and projections to show that, if that's where we go. And then the advisory committee we need to meet with and capital budget committee, which would be part of a warrant article, dog and pony show, if if that's where we go. So that's the last slide that we have. Any questions?
Okay, that was that was great. I I mean, personally, I really do think we should have this on this town meeting warrant, but I want to hear what the board thinks, and this may be a bigger discussion than just tonight's meeting, but that was a great update, Tanya. Diane, I see your hand first.
Yes, I agree that we should put it on an agenda and talk through a, what a warrant article might look like and exactly what the dollar amount would be, as Tiny said, up to a million dollars or whatever. Just really quickly, and I don't want to belabor it because I know we're behind and we have a lot of people, but what what did Hull do that they bought generators that I keep hearing about? They've taken care of their citizens, and and I I I wonder what they've done with
Yeah.
generators.
Sure. So I I can tell you, and there were some people who were protesting it. You have to remember Hull has a municipal light company. Right? So they can go do their own microgrid. They're also at the end of the line with like one line coming in. So it's just a question of being able to switch it off. So they bought a lot of backup generation to be able to run it to support to support their town when there's an outage. And they're big backup generators and they're fossil fuel, and they have them all set up and depending on who you talk to, they've already paid for themselves. And I'm not even sure they're operating them during the non-outage period. But that that is what they've been trying to do. There are people who don't want fossil fuel generation. Right? There's there's fumes and cancerous agents and stuff that go with that. But but that's what they've done. And Hingham, who also is a municipal lighting company, Hingham is doing a couple of things. One is they bought a five-megawatt battery. And that battery was supposed to pay for itself in five years, paid for itself in one year. So that's what Hingham did. They can do that because they're a municipal light company, they own the distribution wires in their town, they did significant tree trimming as part of their program to improve. At the end of the day, though, they're still receiving power from a National Grid feeder line. Right? So they're still having outages. That's what Hull's problem was. Hingham also, this is public because they put out an RFP, Hingham is moving forward with a climate action plan. So interestingly, they have the equivalent of the alternative energy committee, it's called the Energy Action Committee, the EAC. And that is, that that's taken the lead with a new ad hoc committee to do a climate action plan, which is going to look into a lot of these same issues as well. Corey.
This really isn't a comment, but it's since there's a lot of people at the meeting, just it was a kind of a moment to soapbox a little bit. So if you'll grant me just a little bit here. You know, you mentioned about, Tanya mentioned, you know, how we get grant funding, and this is important that we all understand that kind of regardless of of what we're trying to fund, and we all agree that grant funding is a great thing for our town to get. It always takes input from our side. There is no free money that just comes to us where people, it always involves us investing, you know, in in the forward sense to get money back. So when we talk about grant funding, and I get a lot of emails from people that say, oh, why don't we just get the state to fund that? Well, a lot of that does require us to make the investment here. So this, you know, what what is proposed here isn't unique in that, we've seen that in a lot of other places. And if we want to maximize, you know, I think we need to, as we think about, certainly a long-term capital plan and the needs of our community, we also have to keep in our minds the way we maximize the potential gain for our community, because we don't want to be choosing one project over another and and, you know, missing literally millions of dollars without realizing it. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there to as try to give some background to people that are listening.
Thanks, Corey. Let's see. Other questions for Tanya? I, again, Tanya, I think you made a very good case as to why this should be on this next town meeting warrant. I definitely think we need to put it on another agenda to keep discussing it when we have a few more details about price, but you've definitely made a persuasive case.
Well, it was supposed to be an update, but any update comes with next steps because I'm a consultant. So
Exactly.
There's always next steps.
Any final thoughts or questions?
Um, thank you, Tanya.
As always, to be continued, Tanya.
As always, thank you so much again, and we appreciate all of your support and letting us go down this path. It was a long road.
It's been a long road, and we're still on the road, but we're grateful to you.
The the journey is the reward. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, whoo. Deep breath. But we've made it this far on the agenda. All right. Deep breath to everyone in the audience. Moving on to the Barnes Field Complex. A couple of things here. We're going to start with the lease discussion, and I'm going to have Michelle tee that up in a minute. So the purpose of tonight is to, first of all, review and vote on the lease. The rules and regulations, yes, legally are part of the lease, but they're kind of considered to be an addendum. Right? So it is legally appropriate, and we've checked this, that we can approve the lease first and then move into the discussion about rules and regulations. All right. And for those in the audience that would like to speak tonight, it is our goal to make sure everyone feels heard. I would appreciate if you would raise your hand in the audience, especially when we get to the portion about rules and regulations, and I will let you into the room to speak whether visually on camera or just through your voice by stating your name and address. I won't be reading any comments in the chat. All right. So if you want to speak tonight, please come into the room. I think that's more fair and more appropriate to do under these circumstances. And I just want to announce to everyone watching and we have been talking about this issue for a long time. There have been so many thoughtful opinions on it. We have all received a lot of thoughtful feedback on this. Thank you to everyone who has spoken out on this so far on all sides. All of us on the board, I know, have had many phone calls about this, gotten many emails, many messages, and we are all trying to do our best in moving, moving the ball along the field on this issue, and it's something that all of us are taking really seriously, and we really appreciate the thoughtfulness of the comments. That being said, tonight, if you do have comments, we want them to be limited to two minutes. I will be doing my best to time them. And if you have especially new information or new comments that have not been heard before, that would especially be appreciated. All right. So I would like to start with the lease portion. Michelle, I know you have a quick update on what's gone on with that.
Sure. So so I'm just going to take us down a little path of the process. So we did put out the RF, the RFP, we received that one response from CYB SA. We, at last week's select board meeting, you voted to move forward with the notice of award. And then that led us to the lease discussions. So we posted the lease on the webpage. We solicited public comments and solicited feedback from CYB SA. We received several edits and several comments from the community. We tried our best to incorporate as many as possible into the lease. We then posted a new version of the lease on the website again for people to take a look at. I've only received one comment since then. And that was from a CYB SA member who is concerned that there is a well on the property that they're going to take the responsibility of managing and moving. And nowhere in the lease is that is that outlined, only because it's the lease discusses only the perimeters of the land. And this well happens to be outside the perimeter of the land. So he just wants to make sure that he can move the well as he has promised in the past because it is not on the land. So that is one modification that we should seek counsel for, just to make sure that it's incorporated and that we're capturing it, because they do want to make that improvement, which is great for the town. And we we want to make sure that it's captured here in the lease. But every, all the other comments have been captured. I haven't heard any additional feedback. So at this time, I believe the lease you have before you is the cleanest version of the lease.
Does everyone have the cleanest version in front of them, or have they looked at it in terms of questions? I want to make sure we're all talking about the same document. All right, I will open it up to questions from the board or comments or feedback on this lease part, the main lease from the board. Diane.
I I think the lease is fine. My only question is just the 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 procurement of, you know, the improvements, because obviously we know there is a proposal for lights, and I just want to understand what the responsibility is of CYB SA for the procurement. And then do they become the property of CYB SA, or do they become the property of of the land? And how does that, there's the you know, should should they move on, you know, what's what happens to their personal property, et cetera?
I think I can answer part of that question for you. So I did ask the opinion of town council on the entire procurement of any improvements to the land. They did send back an opinion later this afternoon. I wasn't able to digest it, to be able to share it with the board. But it is an opinion that we received. As far as property, being town property or CYB SA property, it is, I believe it is the opinion that if they if CYB SA purchases, purchases, purchases the the improvements, then it is, it is theirs. And after ten years, they have the option to take it with them or gift it over to the town.
Okay, so that would happen at the ten-year mark? Okay. So that would happen at the 10-year mark? Okay.
And just the question of the process of procurement, um, sure, you know. Should they be making improvements? You know, because that's the do, how does the procurement process take place?
Yep. So, um, because they are a private organization and it is town land. Um, the procurement process is a little different, only because they really don't have to follow um, public bidding laws. Um, they can bid it privately or choose a vendor of their choice. The item in question is prevailing wage. Typically on dollar one on town-owned land, you pay prevailing wage. Because this lease is for 10 years, an extended period of time, and they are a private organization. Um, the question was posed to legal, do they need to pay prevailing wage? What is the opinion? Please provide it to us along with case study, so we know that we're covered in any um, guidance that we provide to CYB SA.
Okay. Diane, do you have a follow-up? Okay. Jack and then Jean.
Yeah, I, I would just say that I believe in general real estate law. That when you permanently attach anything to uh, real estate, it becomes real property as opposed to chattel property. Now, there may be some municipal exception to that, but I, I think that's as far as for the purposes of our. Discussion this evening, it really doesn't make any difference, but.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Jean.
Um, yeah, I would just point out maybe Diane for your uh, edification that um, provision five C. Requires the tenant to comply with all applicable rules, requirements, et cetera, including prevailing wage rate. So to the extent that CYB SA is in fact required to comply. If it becomes apparent after they get confirmation from council, whichever way they need to go, then they. Comply with it. And the same is true on procurement laws, right? And so there's a provision in the lease that. Already envisions depending on what the law requires that they will comply with it, including prevailing wage and procurement.
Yeah, and I, I, I absolutely have no, I'm, I'm thinking of it more from the CYB SA standpoint. Which is they want to know what they're walking into in terms of what, what hurdles they might have to face um, in procuring these. But I, I, I'm satisfied with the answer. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts on the lease? I think it looks great overall. Michelle, I know we've been through a few drafts of this. And thank you for all your hard work on getting this ready. Do we feel ready to make a motion to. Approve this lease and then move on to the rules and regulations as a separate discussion? I'll entertain a motion if we feel ready to, for that. You all, I'm trying to read the body language here. Are you all afraid to move on to the next?
No, just, sorry, just, just a clarification. I'm happy to move it. Uh, my only question is this would be subject to the well. The language being um, satisfactory to CYB SA as reviewed by council, right? Relating to the.
I believe Chris, so yes. Michelle.
Yeah, um, and I just actually got a message from Vince stating that they're not moving the well. They just want to be able to maintain the well. Um, but they want to make sure that they're maintaining something that um, is off-premise. But still under their, their guise. So I would, I would speak to legal counsel just to make sure they incorporated that one little piece.
And, and just one question, should that be under the, the, the next discussion of rules and regulations? Or is it, is it definitely something that needs to be clarified in the lease?
Um, I, I think we could probably clarify it in the um, attachments where you outline the property. Um, as a whole, so you attach the assess, the assessor's property card. And in there, I think it could be a small bullet that just says, and well, you know, something, something of that nature.
That would make sense. Corey?
Yeah, that was my, my suggestion was just to put an exhibit fee for description of premises.
All right. I think we're all on the same page on this.
I think we, uh, I, I think it behooves us to make sure there isn't somebody in the audience who wants to speak to the lease. Uh, to the um, lights and the uh, regulations. And by the way, for people who are watching this, the reason the regulations are separately is so we could separate the question of the light. Of the lights from the overall lease.
Well, and the other rules and regulations too, Jack, that we're gonna, we're next. Yeah. Yeah. So if anyone, we're moving on to rules and regulations after this general lease part. So does anyone in the audience have questions about thi- this lease portion, not including rules and regulations? I have not seen any hands yet. Wait, wait, hold on. I see one. See one. We got, we got a live one. Hold on. Mr. Russ Benetti, you are now in the room. Please state your address and your comment. I will time it at two minutes, like everyone is going to be tonight. Russ, can you hear us? Trying to make sure you're unmuted, Russ.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, um, on the question about improvements to the property. Um, on the lease for the sailing club. And, and maybe there's a difference because that was, I believe, a 99-year lease. Uh, it states that any of the improvements that the sailing club makes to the property. In this case, including that building, uh, becomes town property should they abandon the lease. Uh, it doesn't, I don't believe it says either voluntarily or involuntarily. Um, so that may be something town council might want to look at. And on the boathouse at the Hagerty property. We tried to get around the prevailing wage law when we needed to shore that building up. Uh, by doing the work, uh, leasing the property off to the rowing group and having them go for. The improvements, uh, because then they would be, it's not a town entity. But in the end, because it was town property, it still had to go with prevailing wage. So that's something that they, uh, they may want to check out as well.
Okay. Thank you, Russ. Michelle, I, thank you, Russ. Michelle, I see your hand up to respond.
Yep. Um, so as it pertains to true prevailing wage, we do have that legal counsel opinion that we will read through. Um, but I just want to say, I've spoken to CYB SA at length about this. And if, if they do have to pay prevailing wage, um, they are aware of it. Um, they're happy to do so. They're happy to comply with. With any laws that, you know. That apply to them. Um, and as far as the improvements, so. I think we're talking about different improvements. So the ADA compliance that um, is funded by CYB SA. Obviously would stay with the property. I think it's more specific to the lights where they're going to be procuring, purchasing and installing themselves. Um, in the event of default, yes, becomes town property, but after 10 years. Um, the town can accept it as a gift.
Mm-hmm.
Or not. So, um, I think that's where we stand with that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I move that we uh, accept, unless we have somebody else.
I don't see any more hands. Put your hand up now if you have another lease comment. Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, I move that we accept the lease.
Right second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Jack, great night.
Ray Evans, I.
Can he lay the pool down?
Diane Kennedy.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right. Fabulous. That part is done. Michelle, again, thank you for all your hard work on that part. All right. Moving on to the rules and regulations. I know there are several of these we want to talk about. Some of them are just, I think, very straightforward and we all already agree on them. Some of them obviously need further discussion. So I guess I all, I want to start with letting the board give some comments here. If anyone on the board wants to speak immediately on this, and then I will open it up to anyone in the audience to speak on it. Corey.
I was just going to suggest maybe swapping that around. Um, I know we all have notes. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I knew we all had notes. All right. The people. The, the, this is your time now. So please, if anyone. Again, we've already, those of you who have already sent us messages and feedback and phone calls and emails. We, we have thought about your comments there and we are taking that into account. So if you have already sent us something and we've read it. Don't feel that there's pressure to speak again on it, but. People are welcome to. All right. I'm going to start with Kim McGowan and Anne Marie Wilton. I'm letting you both into the room, promoting you as a panelist. Kim, you are now in the room. Welcome. We will start with you and then Anne Marie. Please state your name and address if you're not. Kim McGowan, as the Zoom box says.
Hey folks, this is Chris McGowan. Can you hear me?
Yes, Chris.
Uh, 154 North Main Street.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, I have some questions, some comments on exactly what, what is uh, taking place with this specific agenda item. Um, I, I, I attended the uh, the December select board meeting. I think that was the last in-person meeting. Um, that meeting took place in the, in the wake of uh, of, of town meeting. Um, I, I did ask some questions on the matter of the lights. Uh, at the Little League field and how exactly that process was going to play out at the, with the select board. Um, my, my understanding there was that uh, a- any conversation or deliberation. And an eventual vote on the light would need to take place a- at the select board, which obviously makes sense. Um, and then also it had to be specifically listed as an agenda item prior to the meeting. Um, relative to any potential vote tonight. I, I think I found out last night via Facebook post that a vote on lights might take place tonight. Um, so that, that's, that's based on what I, I heard at the December meeting. That doesn't feel or, or seem right to me. Um, which, which would lead me to my second question, which is uh, i- if indeed it's the board's intention to vote on the lights tonight. Uh, why, why would it be done in advance of the uh, activitas report? Particularly when they're, they're drilling down pretty heavily on usage and capacity issues at the fields.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can start with that and then maybe Michelle can respond to about the field study. So. Obviously, the lights are included in the rules and regulations. If people are feeling that that was not transparent, that was not the case. We obviously are starting to talk about rules and regulations tonight. Whether we take a vote on all of the rules and regulations or some of them or none of them is going to depend on, going to depend on how this discussion goes. And if we have motions to take votes. So this isn't try, we're trying to be as incredibly transparent as possible here. The lights are included under rules and regulations, but you're right, the word lights was not specifically on the agenda. In terms of the uh, the field study going on, there's a lot of progress being made on that. They are kind of running parallel with this issue. Michelle, I, I believe you have said that that would probably be ready maybe mid-March, but I would like for you to confirm on that. As a response to him.
Sure. So um, we've been working closely with activitas. Um, we had a stakeholders meeting last week. Um, to gather additional field usage information. Um, we have a due date of tomorrow by noon. For all of the youth organizations to get back to us with their usage. Um, at such time, activitas will pull all the data together and um, give us in a high-level report. Um, as to what they've seen. Um, but they do think that they will conclude the entire study by mid-March.
Okay. And at that point, we'd be ready for an update. Okay. Chris, your hand's still up. Do you have a response to that?
I do. Um, we, it's Kimberly now. I have another point to add. Um, so just to finish on that point. You're not going to make a decision before you have the field study information, right? It, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't add up that you wouldn't get all the facts. The town spent $40,000 on this.
We have not decided whether we're making a decision or not, but I appreciate you, your feedback in saying that you don't think we should.
No, I'm saying you, I, well, not tonight, but I'm saying in general, shouldn't the field study be completed before? And so you have all the facts before you can make a decision.
No, I think that's a valid point.
Okay. My, my other comment um, is uh, more specific. And that's just simply, you know, I really appreciate that the CYB SA has um, worked very hard in their latest effort. And, and proposal about the lights. That took a lot of time and energy. I, I appreciate that. Um, but I have been wishing for a long time now that they would have come to our neighborhood a lot sooner. And involved us in this process so that we could collaborate on a solution instead of the adversarial situation that we've come to. Um, in just our, you know, crowdsourcing ideas, we come up with a solution that I haven't heard them propose that would not involve lights. It's a great solution. There's um, friends that have kids that are at the high school level. That are uh, still playing baseball and they're traveling up and down the East Coast. And they're seeing every town, um, you know, up and down these coasts is having these similar field crunch time issues. And so many of the towns they've seen have put in uh, removable pitching mounds. That would be a great solution for these three little fields tucked into our neighborhood of historic homes. You could have three softball games going on at the same time or three baseball games, any iteration of. And so I just want that on the public record because it just seems like.
Thirty-second warning.
Life seems to be the only solution and it's not the only solution. I want to make sure it's on the public record and the board is aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anne Marie. You are next.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, super. So I'm Anne Marie Wilton at 207 North Main. And so I just wanted to mention also on the record that a number of the select board have mentioned following a process. Over the last year since lighting was first proposed. And I would assume that analyzing safety is certainly one of the most important processes that you as stewards of, of the town would undertake. And I think it's important to note that no other town authority, even the ZBA, will be reviewing safety. And that this issue is solely in your hands. And on this matter, Hingham recently underwent a light study. And they determined that lights at 35 feet were unsatisfactory for both player safety and neighborhood spill. And this study is publicly available. So I respectfully suggest that at a minimum, a rule be added. That if the lights are approved, that they meet Little League's national standards for safety. And that's about it.
Thank you, Anne Marie. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Darren, your hand is up next. Please state your address.
Hey, everybody. Uh, Darren Souza, 70 Blackrock Road. Um, first and foremost. We, uh, as you all know, we did uh, submit a proposal for usage and stewardship of the light. So, you know, I wanted to just let you know I'm here for any Q and A uh, around that. Um. I, I will not comment on the safety versus height aspect. We are, the proposal includes a pretty detailed testimonial from the president of the lighting company, who's also the commissioner of. The second largest Little League district in the country. Um, these lights more than suffice for the safety and illumination for play. Um, and whether they meet Little League standards for things like state competitions and things like that. We've already discussed this. Um, that's not the priority here. So we, we are very comfortable that the manufacturer and the engineer. Stand behind the safety and we will continue to provide you the information around that. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Okay. Yeah, there may be more questions for you, so you can stay waiting in the wings. Any other comments from attendees? Hold on. Feel like I'm DJing a meeting. Tried to get everyone in here. All right. Dema, I see you next. And then Kathleen, you will be after Dema. Dema, can you hear us?
To mute. Yes, hi. Hi, this is Dema Omran, 19 Ledwood Farm Drive, um, Cohasset, obviously Massachusetts. So I just want to make a comment, like I just feel that the energy about this topic is no one wants to be inconvenienced. We've all like suffered. about this topic is no one wants to be inconvenienced. We've all like suffered so much during the pandemic. And we've seen how much our kids suffered. And I think I, I understand that it might be very, a bit inconvenient for the neighboring towns, but I think if we can just all say, you know what, like either everyone at one point had a kid or they're going to have a child who's going to be in softball. And let's just like be a bit inconvenienced for the sake of having our kids go back to having some kind of normalcy. It feels like, like, no offense, everyone's having an in, very individualistic, um, thoughts on everything, whether it was the Red Lion cave where someone is worried that it's going to inconvenience his street and the drinking and like, it's just like, like we're, there are so many small businesses that are just trying to, to thrive. And there are also kids who want to play softball and girls deserve to get to play best softball, not in the middle of the dark. Like that's a basic need. We keep talking about our town and how awesome it is. And honestly, I don't see us being, uh, cohesive strong. I see everyone just looking out for themselves. And we need to just be a bit more like, like kinder to each other. Like our kids have been home. Most of them are, are having mental health issues. We have suicide rates in colleges are on the rise. Everyone here probably knows. And let's just give them some normalcy. So, so what? Like what? We're going to be inconvenienced and the town's going to be a bit lit around the, the dark. Guys, think of the time everyone was stuck at home during pandemic. Does, does everyone remember those nights? Let, let, let's have some kids screaming on the, on the field and some lights on, like, please bring it on. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nima. We appreciate it. Kathleen, you are up next.
Oh, hi, this is Kathleen Broderick. I live at 16 Quanahasset Trail. I am a butter to the North Main Street Little League Fields. Um, as a follow-up to Dima, I'll just say that we're CYB SA big fans. My husband coached for 10 years. All three of my children played on the field. So, um, it's, it's not a inconvenience thing. It, it's, it's about asking for our neighborhood to be heard. And, um, you know, four to 12-year-olds on a field, um, it's, it's not an inconvenience thing. We're here asking, you know, to, for, you know, feed, give feedback about our neighborhood and not just our neighborhood for the town. So. Um, I, I have the, um, latest version and Exhibit C up on my, um, computer, which I think is the latest version that has five items on it. Uh, one of the things we asked for some of the neighbors and my husband and I is to make sure that, um, that on that exhibit that this clearly the fields are for youth only. There will not be any adult play over the age of 18. So we want that to be very clear so that there aren't out of town things and that other people will be on those if, if lights are allowed, that, you know, one of the reasons lights wanted to be allowed was so they could, you know, adults could be on there. So please respectfully ask for you to add that.
No, that's an important point, Kathleen. And I do think we need to discuss, I mean, CYB SA has the word youth in it. And I know there are some philanthropic, you know, dad, daughter, dad, son events that do happen, but I do think we need to specify.
Needs to be spelled out.
No, I agree. I, no, I agree. I think we need to specify if we would allow all adult leagues. I know there are some strong feelings on that. So thank you, Kathleen, for that clarification. All right. Any other hands up? I'm going to Laura Soderberg, I see you next. Laura, you are up next. We see. There we go. Sorry. Yes, thank you. Um, I did want to just make a comment for the, um, for the group that's listening in. There was this notion that there's this, you know, silver key that would solve all of our problems, which would be the removable mounds. And unfortunately that doesn't necessarily address the issue at hand, which is already all three fields, whether they're baseball or softball are already at capacity. So even though other towns might be using these removable mounds, we just don't have an open field or an open baseball slash softball field to utilize those. So, um, that's really not going to address the capacity need that we're, that we're trying to address at this point. And that's my comment. And I'm sorry, I'm at 16 Black Horse Lane. Thank you, Laura. Yeah.
Thank you.
Try to remember addresses, people. I know I'm maybe forgetting to ask a couple of you. As I DJ the meeting here, Darren, I believe you, would you like to respond about the youth versus adult? Comment made.
Sure. Thank you. Um, it is already a matter of policy. If you look at the policies and SOP that we drafted. Um, there will be no adult leagues or non-CYB SA. Um, events under these lights. So it's already in there. We can, we can continue to refine that and we can even make it more, kind of call that out, but, um, you know, the, the language that we have there should be, should be, should suffice for sure.
Okay. And if that's language that we feel as a board that we need to clarify more, that is something we can do. Corey?
I, I just, um, and, and Darren, thanks for clarifying that. But I do think if we're going to ask something, we probably should hear from, um, the president of CYB SA or an active board member. I know Darren was. Um, but Darren, in this situation is just, just a resident. So, um, yeah, just for, 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 you know, procedure here.
Okay.
May, may I just clarify that? Thanks. Um, so I'm, I'm a past president and I'm an emeritus board member and I have a number of capacities. So, um, but I know Vin is here to join as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Jill, I see your hand next. You are in the room. Jill Crafts, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, it's actually Roger Crafts.
Hi.
How are you? It's 156 North Main Street.
Thank you.
Listening to me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Um, I'm probably in this neighborhood, the hawk. But I think most of the neighbors have tried very hard to, uh, come up with solutions to satisfy not only CYB SA but also, um, uh, lacrosse, soccer and other neighborhoods coming up with creative solutions. I might, uh, mention that, um, three neighbors, uh, the Brodericks, the Wiltons and the Gundersons were very instrumental back about 20 years ago in implementing the chase and Freedom Fields. Part of that agreement, but it has not been recognized is that lights would not be part of this, uh, uh, whole process. Uh, I also might mention that Todd Wilton, uh, just sent you a note about the sacrifices they made back about 20 years ago to make these two fields happen. And, um, they, uh, also outlined some of the consequences that will take place if lights along with noise and other, uh, traffic situations occur. I went back, uh, today and I looked at the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's the Massachusetts School and District Profiles. It's a spreadsheet that I put together and I can share with the board if you'd like to see it. Um, they outline, uh, numbers, number of students by grade. Uh, and I took, uh, K through seven, seventh grade from 1994 and implemented by five years through 2021, 22. In 1994, 95, there were 849 students in the Cohasset schools. In 2021, 22, there were 853. An increase of four students. And if you look at the increment over the last each five years, the numbers don't vary much. I might mention that 1994, 90.
Thirty second warning, just a heads up.
I might mention that 94, 95, uh, was three years before Chase and Freedom were put into, uh, years. Now there are a number of issues that are still outstanding that have not been addressed by the state, I mean, by the, by the, uh, board, including 35-foot lights. And I concur that if a pop-up goes over 30 feet, it's detrimental to a kid.
Okay.
Lighting.
One more sentence.
Well, I'm just saying that you're.
I, I understand. I'm, I'm going to give you one more sentence to conclude. We're just trying to hold everyone fairly.
I'm saying that we should wait and see what, um, uh, the trap, the study comes up for field studies. And I think you're a little derelict in not addressing some of these issues. If you vote before that takes place.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Vince, I see you in the room next. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thank you again for having us, um, tonight. Um, just to address a couple of points, uh, Laura brought up the fact of the portable mounds. We do actually have portable mounds. Um, we have used them in the past when there hasn't been field, uh, crossover. Then just want to point out some issues and the fact that softball typically, um, is played on a full play infield. Uh, baseball can be played on that clay infield. Softball does not play on a grass infield. So we can't typically have, um, games. We could probably have a practice, but we can't have games on a baseball field. But in order to practice, you want to practice on the fields that you're going to be playing on. So, uh, just wanted to address that. Um, we have had and opened up conversations with the neighbors for over a year now. So this is not something that's coming in. Um, you know, as a quick, you know, under the rug activity. So we've had, had dialogues. I believe Jack has monitored some of these conversations in the past. Uh, so there has been open dialogue or we, we've tried to have open dialogue. I know the numbers that, um, Roger is indicating, uh, show that there may be only four increase in students, but the number of playing students now has increased substantially. Uh, we thanked the town back in 2002 when they put the fields in, uh, and took away what was an eyesore, uh, the gravel pit. And really beautified the area with these two fields. Uh, and as you can see, the draw has been tremendous. Um, and I'm sure we'll see that when, um, activist comes up with their numbers. Um, and I'm here to address any other comments that come up. And, you know, I, Corey, thank you for, um, Darren has been instrumental in pulling a lot of this information. Uh, he and I talked and he jumped in before I did. So, um, I'm here to answer any questions, but Darren is a board member in emeritus status. So he's, uh, I, more than qualified to talk.
Thank you, Vince. That was almost exactly two minutes. Thanks for being here. Okay. All right. Any other attendees want to speak before we let some of the board speak on this? Kim, I see your hand up again. I will allow you to speak one more time. Kim, go ahead. Kim slash Chris or whoever it is.
Sorry, I was speed talking too, and you couldn't even hear me.
No, we couldn't even hear you.
Okay, here we go. I, um, not about the lights, but just about specifics of what you have for rules and regulations so far. No alcohol is permitted anywhere on the premises except pursuant to a liquor license. I think you should just drop off a liquor license. There should never be a liquor license on these Little League fields.
No, I think that's a fair point. I mean, if we want to specify that, we can, Kim. So thank you.
Just edit it. Just cut it right down.
Okay. Well, all right. Uh, we will see what the board thinks.
Okay. Um, and no overnight parking on the premises. Um, I think is a good intention, but, um, I do need to raise the fact that North Main Street has no on-street parking, not even in front of our own houses. So, um, from time to time, we do need to use those lots, uh, to, to be able to park our cars safely in our neighborhood. So I don't know what you can do about that language, but, um, I needed to, to mention that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Looks like we have a lull from our, hold on. Russ has one more comment. We're almost getting to the board. Well, another person. All right. Russ and Patricia, I'm letting you both in. Russ, go ahead. Russ, can you hear us?
There. No.
Yep, Ross. Yep.
You can hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay. Um, my disappointment in this is that it's going to be basically a single use for CYB SA uh, on the field. The field's purchased with CPC money. Uh, and I don't know prior to the last 12 years, but in the last number of years, we've pumped quite a few dollars into the property. Bringing it to ADA compliance and such forth. Uh, and I'm disappointed that it's not going to be available to other people if they want to use it, uh, excluding at night with, with, uh, any lights. But during the day, it should be available for pickup games if those are still allowed now. Uh, or, uh, other, uh, school activities, uh, girls, uh, field hockey, uh, so that, that sort of stuff. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Russ.
Yeah.
Patricia.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Please get your address.
I'm Patricia Tymia, 38th Hall Road here in Cohasset. Um, I'm a parent of one of the, the girls softball team members. And my comment here tonight is just, um, I understand there mightn't have been a change in the number of students, but this is an underserved population. And without these lights, the girls are not going to get time to play games. So I just wrote that comment.
Thank you for, thank you for that, Patricia. All right. Just checking here. Kim McGowan, you have your hand up again. Please make it quick. Cause I know we've already spoken a couple of times. And then Adam Branch, promoting you in. I don't know where Kim went. Hi, Adam. Go ahead. State your address.
Hi, good evening. It's Adam Branch, 22 Woodway. Um, I understand the, the statistics that were listed regarding participation or at least students at the school. I was wondering, since there are so many people on the meeting tonight, if we could just remind everyone what the town vote count was in favor or not in favor of the lights that took place, uh, last year? Just for historical purposes.
Okay. I, are, are you asking me to find that exact total for you, Adam?
I was just trying to get a, just trying to get a gauge for, you know, what the citizens, um, had voted.
So we could look up the exact numbers for you if you want. I, I, does anyone remember exactly what the percentages were or what the numbers were?
It was about 60, 40% in, in favor.
That's what I was going to guess. Thanks, Jack. Ish, around there.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Okay. Barbara, I'm promoting you in. Hi, Barbara. Please state your address.
Free Ripley Road, Barbara With.
Hi.
I was wondering if anyone on the board could clarify for me what the zoning specifications are around town. So for example, if someone wanted to put lighting up on other town or leased property. What's the procedure for that process?
So for town property or for private property?
Town.
Michelle, maybe I'll invite you in for this because I believe you know the exact. No.
I, I did speak to, um, the building commissioner today regarding, um, the needs. And he said he would outline it for me, um, by the end of the week, but, um, I don't have an exact answer and I don't want to speculate, but as soon as I do have the, um, answer, we, we can make it public.
I am.
I just want to clarify and somebody can affirm this or not, that whatever the zoning laws are or regulations are, um, it would apply to private or public property. There's no distinction. So, um, it's whatever it is. it's whatever it is in terms of, you know, setbacks and heights and whatever, but it would apply to any property across town.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Oh, someone wanted to put lighting. If I wanted to light up my driveway light at night so my children could play basketball in the driveway. If I wanted to do the corner where the library is, so people could use those stairs to the library for amphitheater. If somebody wanted to do the parking lot of Sandy Beach, there's a lot of different places in town that would make a lot of sense to have it lit at night so our children could enjoy the space. So I was just wondering, like, at what point do, does our town protect homeowners?
Well, just to clarify, Barbara, the select board is a whole votes on the use of public land and our town-owned land and public land. Private property, stuff like that would go separately to the zoning board. That's not a select board decision.
So is the baseball fields public or private?
This is public land, which is why we just voted to approve the lease for them. It's co-town land.
We wanted to do it at Sandy Beach Parking Lot. Light that up at night so we could enjoy pizza at night.
Well, make that proposal and we'll bring it to a meeting.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I don't see any more hands up right now. There can be a chance for more hands in the all right. Every time I say that, another hand comes. So I'm trying to get to the board to speak, but I would like to know if the board wants me to keep taking all hands or if you want to move on to some board comments and then come back to public comments.
Jill. I think it's very important that we let the people speak.
We are letting the people speak, Jack.
If if while you're waiting for another hand to go from from everybody else and in the rules and regulations, there's, you know, we talked about parking, that some of the neighbors use the parking lot, and then there's a line in the rules and regulations talking about parking shall be maintained solely within the premises. So we've run into situations where there are private citizens using the parking lot. And then during a heavy weekend, we run out of spaces. You know, we're not, the board is not in the role of parking management. You know, if someone parks on the street, you know, we try to warn them to park elsewhere. If someone parks in the common and walks up, you know, that's that's out of our purview. But having, you know, we try our best to keep parking controlled, but there's there's outline factors there. And many time we have a police detail during those heavy weekends. So we do, we do strive to maintain parking in a controlled fashion.
Yep. Thank you. Jill?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Just in reference to what the gentleman said about the the vote count, it's about one and a half percent of the residents in the town of Cohasset. So I didn't vote there because I have health issues and it was a an open meeting. So there were a number of people who did not vote. So I don't think that's generic point. The other point I wanted to make was, I think, lights in a residential neighborhood are just really not appropriate. It's not the right location. And I think we can find a better location to provide fields for our kids rather than putting it in the neighborhood and on the backs of about twenty or thirty residents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone new who has not spoken yet would like to give a chance for new people to speak. I see your hand, Diane. Again, we can do this all night if you want to keep putting hands up, everyone. That's the point. All right, Diane, I don't see a hand right this minute, so I'm going to go to you.
Yeah, I want to clarify a couple of things and then I can hopefully steer us into starting to talk about rules and regulations. One is, again, no matter whether you have private property or public property, you're subject to the zoning laws or the conservation commission laws, wetland bylaws, et cetera. So so if for if somebody wanted to put lights at Sandy Beach Parking Lot, that happens to be public property. So you know, the board or Sandy Beach Association, if they had made the proposal, would have to ask for the same relief potentially from zoning as as a private citizen would. So there's no distinction there. What, two things I want to talk about, one is I I do have, and I'm going to be very unpopular, and I realize this, I kind of came in here unpopular. You know, we, we're not here to discuss the lights. There is, the the lease is very clear about, you know, forty-five days that we're supposed to have a proposal on the lights. And we do, we do have proposal, a proposal, but we haven't heard it in public session. So the fact that I've read it, and actually I think it's very well done. And the fact that Jean's read it and Jack's read it and Carrie's read it and Corey's read it, the fact that it hasn't been posted at a public meeting is a concern of mine. I recognize that in order to have a conversation about lighting and adding lights, which we all know is is something that, you know, many people in town want, that that's something that we want to talk about. But in in order to do that, the idea and vote at town meeting was to allow us to get to this lease point. So we're at the lease point. We have a great lease. The lease requires that we provide consent. The board provides consent to a plan and specifications provided to us by CYBSA, the less C. And we can't talk about putting the lights up in the specifications unless it's a posted meeting where we're getting the proposal. So I am very excited. I want to move this forward as much as anybody. But I think we really need to focus on the rules and regulations as opposed to are lights going up or lights not going up. Let's talk about the things we can do in the rules and regulations to set up the next conversation, which is a proposal to put lights up, where we can have the discussions of this meets the rules and regulations. We've we've set out the the timing, you know, or the usage of the field, days, times, et cetera. And so I'd like to really focus us there and on rules and regulations so that we can actually get a presentation with plans and specifications to vote on as soon as possible. I'll do it in forty-eight hours from now.
Jean, did you have your hand up as a response or comment?
Yeah, I just have to comment, last meeting, there was, I made a request that we put the lights on the agenda. We got a lights proposal back, all of us, August thirty-first. There's been multiple requests to have CYBSA present their proposal. And now that we're here, finally doing rules and requirements, which would include lights. I don't like the idea of kicking the can down the road even further. I understand that you may want a proposal, Diane, and we have CYBSA here as well as many, many people. We've gotten the proposal. The neighbors have gotten the proposal, and I think I maybe want to just back up and frame this a little more because I do think the history here is really important. I'm not sure. I'm on the same page with you, Diane, as to what that town meeting vote was about, but just for everyone's edification. CYBSA presented at a select board meeting almost a year ago, more than a year ago, I think, in March. After months of conversation, I understand, occurred with the town prior to that about how best to donate money. Over the summer, when I was elected to the select board, I asked that the board take this issue up, put it on the agenda, get a renewed proposal from CYBSA. Instead, I was told to work with them as a liaison to work on the lease, which I did. And we began lease negotiations in August twenty twenty-one. And we had, you know, we're starting to make progress on that. Simultaneously, CYBSA sent out an updated proposal, including for these thirty-five foot lights to all of the select board members and the neighbors on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. CYBSA also submitted simultaneously a citizens petition to the town meeting, including at the urging of certain select board members, former and present, in order to get a sense of the town on accepting the donation. It wasn't on the lease, it was on accepting a donation for the lights. That's what the citizens petition was about. In the interim, selectman Creighton and I met with the neighbors and CYBSA about the proposal we're looking at today in November to see if there was consensus. We invited and select board Creighton invited feedback, including new proposals, ideas from both sides about a potential compromise. There was no compromise, no suggestions made at that meeting as to a compromise. And so that's how that played out. And then we had the town meeting and the citizens petition, in fact, passed. And then after that, the lease also passed in terms of that warrant article. So now here we are. We've had them go through the whole entire lease process. They've gone through the lease process. Meanwhile, we still have the issue of the donation on the lights hanging out there. And like everyone, we've received lots of emails, a huge amount of emails on this proposal. Everyone knows what it is. These lights that are thirty-five feet that everyone's had since August, last August, with now concerns from the neighbors about light height, like glare, the need for an independent organization like Dark Sky, traffic noise, alcohol, whether CYBSA will comply with all applicable permits and laws. On the other hand, we've heard from families all for the last year or so about the need for more field capacity, the burgeoning need of players. Despite the acknowledged field capacity issues, we have made no real tangible movement on that front, including money for fields, even if we come up with a field study that says, hey, here's some land here. New fields cost millions of dollars. So I just want to remind everyone about there's also a funding issue here. And and I think we've also heard concerns too from many residents about needing, and I'm not going to reiterate those because everyone I think has heard about the need for our kids to return to normalcy. But fundamentally, I just want to remind the town too and everyone that this is a gift of money. It's a donation. It's money that that's preventing the town from having to spend money to, for example, create a new field. So I appreciate that there's lots of concerns around the lights, including glare, et cetera. So we do have a very, very specific proposal from CYBSA. The select board has received it. I'm happy to make it part of the public record. I know the neighbors have all received it as well. This is the same proposal that we received back many, many months ago. The only thing now that we have that's additional, it's the same lights, the same manufacturer, the same specs. The only thing that we've received in addition now is numerous additional proposals as it relates to safety that CYBSA has made relating to the the glare of the lights, the concerns about safety relating to children catching the lights, the proposal to start on the exact days and times, the automatic timer that they propose, the consequences they propose if those rules are not followed, the noise restrictions that they've agreed to, the fact that they're not going to conduct fall ball, the fact that they are willing to take on the expense and installation of the lights, that they will, they're proposing to have a lights committee that will incorporate the neighbors on that committee to provide continual feedback as need be, and that CYBSA will have a point of contact. And they have affirmed their agreement to a continued no alcohol policy. So just for everyone watching, I just want everyone to understand the information that's out there and has been out here for months and months and months that's being improved upon as I think, even though that meeting back in November did not yield compromises, CYBSA is trying to meet the neighbors' concerns. I see that some of the neighbors, I think, are bringing up issues and there's some good dialogue. And I think that we are here at a place where we can and should make a decision. And I'm prepared to make a motion tonight. And I would like to understand whether my fellow select board members are willing to also be decisive on this.
Okay. Thanks, Jean. And I see several hands up. I just want to say too, CYBSA did offer to give their specific lights presentation again at the meeting tonight. That was my decision to have them not because I thought we needed to have this broader dialogue with the board and with the public, but I take responsibility for that. If that was a bad decision, I take responsibility for it, that it wasn't a specific lights presentation on the agenda. Yes, the lights are included in on rules and regulations, but I am sorry if people feel that that lacked transparency. That was absolutely not the intent, and I take responsibility for that. Corey, I saw your hand up. Diane, you've had your hand up for a while, but Corey and Jack haven't spoken yet. So let's go to Corey, Jack, and then Diane.
Diane, if you've got a clarification or something, you can go first. I've got a little bit of a longie list here.
Go for it.
All right, I just, you know, maybe I don't necessarily, I know that this this is taking time, but I don't necessarily see that as a negative. Good policy takes time. I also don't fault the neighbors for trying to protect their homes or their community in the way they see. As I said in the town meeting, I think that, you know, us talking about it properly has given us the opportunity to identify a lot of issues. And a lot of things that, when I came to this meeting, I thought, and I expected that we could use the rules and regulations to try to hash out, put some ground rules and give some, you know, confidence and some reassurance to those who have concerns. I think that's the proper way to, the proper way to do this. A colleague, Mrs. Kennedy, mentioned earlier about the zoning, and I did send a note to town council about this. So I'll just read, there are two zoning bylaws, which I thought, which the town has, which I've clarified in previous meetings that no matter what the select board says, we don't have the ability to override zoning. So in one section of our zoning bylaws, it says, "There shall be no use of a building, structure, or land in any district for a purpose that is injurious, dangerous, noxious, or offensive to the community by reason of the emissions of odors, waste fumes, dust, smoke, vibration, noise, light radiation, or other causes." And in a separate section, it says, "In all districts, all lights and other sources of illumination, whether interior, exterior, and all intense lights emanating from operations or equipment prevents, shall be shielded from direct view at normal eye level." I bring this up because I sent this note to the to the town council to just clarify, how do we apply such logic or such regulations? Because that's important for the purposes of how we deal with rules and regulations. We've already said that all zoning bylaws must be, must be, must be followed. We've reaffirmed that in rules and regs. And town council says that lighting would have to be installed and designed so as not to create unnecessary glare into a budding property, or the lighting would be required to satisfy other standards. So our zoning bylaws give us some of these rails. They're already there. We don't make those rules. I do think we can build upon those and introduce some other regulations in in the rules and regs, including we have talked about youth sports only. That's been brought up, and I think we got an affirmative from from CYBSA that that's just, they're looking for that, that only for youth, and I think that's great. I think clarifying parking, both that, people do park there for the pool, and I can certainly see how busy summer days when people are at the pool and and then you've got games. So I think we need to do a little better job of clarifying how we deal with the parking situation. It is dangerous and it is real. And I think we have to work together. I don't think either of us can pass the buck on the other party for that. I do think that if there are going to be some sort of accessory lights, we should decide on some standards that any proposal must meet, including if it is dark sky. I think that's a, that's a pretty, pretty good line in the sand. This board doesn't have the authority or the, has the authority, doesn't have the ability to to analyze a light proposal. We're not lighting experts, so we need to find some third parties that can give us the guidance if we are to hear something in the future. And I think it'd be appropriate for us to have that in rules and regulations before we hear a proposal. That way we ensure the proposal we hear, if we do, when we do hear a proposal, conforms with some of these things that we set out ahead of time. I think we can also talk about hours of use. You know, what's acceptable, you know, what's an acceptable, you know, timeframe? Sunsets at eight thirty. I guess games go longer than that, but I think we should put that in rules and regs. So when I come and procedurally, what I'd like to see is us jot some things down tonight about what we'd like to see, including some of the things I mentioned tonight, which as well as, I'm sorry, the the idea of having a community group that's got some feedback. I think that was a very good idea that. I think that was a very good idea that most people have brought up. But we should take these ideas, we should put them together, and we should put them in the rules and regs doc. And then we should put them, we should post them, get some public feedback, get feedback from CYB SA on this list of rules and regs. And then when we're ready, and maybe that is next meeting, it's forty eight hours, like Diane said, we can now understand the rules and regs, and we can listen to a proposal with the context of, you know, more understanding of what we're listening to. Trying to do that all at once, I think, is going to lead us down a path where we're not making good decisions. So I say, let's, let's set some some guidelines first, and then we can talk about next steps.
Okay, so you're saying set guidelines tonight, Corey, and then have a specific lights only meeting or guidelines only meeting or at the next select board meeting? I'm just trying to clarify what you're requesting.
I would request that that we all, that rules and regulations are developed more, which includes our input, CYB SA's input, and then we can post that for public response. And then, once those are done, we can listen to a lighting presentation, once rules and regs have been fully fleshed out.
Okay. Jack?
Yeah. You know, this is a very difficult issue, and we've been dealing with it for closer to two years. Certainly, I've been dealing with actively for a year and a half, had numerous discussions. Jean did a very good job of delineating the various discussions back and forth. And all these facts have been out there openly in the public, widely distributed, widely discussed. So, you know, it's very clear that there's no lack of knowledge, there's no lack of ability to find the facts and figures. They're out there, they've been sent to each and every one of us probably numerous times. So we can't claim that we're unaware of them, we know them. The issue that we as a board have to consider is, as part of the process, there was a very robust and vigorous public discussion about the lights that led up to the special town meeting vote on it. And prior to that, all this same information was widely disseminated and widely debated. And, you know, I came to this as a little skeptical. Show me the facts, let me understand this. I listened to both sides, and my message to both sides was, you know, you're nice people, there's good points on both sides from good citizens. But at a certain point, you know, they were unable to come to an agreement. We tried, we tried about all kinds of things in some of the the meetings, and some proposals went back and forth, but ultimately they were at loggerheads. And when that happens in a democracy, we have a method to solve that, and that's called a vote. And I told both sides that work hard on that vote because as a select board, I think the select board needs to respect integrity of the vote. And the vote happened. And the vote was not close, it was sixty forty. And maybe everybody didn't participate, but everybody had the opportunity. You don't throw an election out because you didn't have hundred percent people, we'd never make any decision. So we as a board are faced with a situation where there's a definitive, no question, overwhelming vote, sixty forty in favor of the lights. So the democracy has, democracy has spoken. And I think as select board members, we have an obligation to respect that, and I intend to respect that. I do think that we know that the decision to have the lights has been made by the people. And our role is to follow up and make sure that happens. The reason that we put the lights in rules and regulations as opposed to in the lease problem is so we didn't have a definitive, ironclad set of rules that could not be changed. The rules and regulations is intense, so we tonight can very simply approve and ratify this, the will of the people and say the lights will go forward. But we can also, because it's a rule and regulation, we can handle these parking issues. We can handle all these other issues that are brought up. We can look at the lights because that's why it's a rules and regulations, it's not cast in stone. But what is cast in stone is the obligation of this select board to honor the will of the people, as clearly expressed in a very clear and very definitive, and no doubt about it, vote of sixty to forty percent of the town meeting. And I think that we just have to do that. Thank you.
Okay, so just again to clarify, Jack, you're saying you're ready to take a vote on the lights tonight? Because I will say there's more to it, right? Like, we have to debate times and days of week. And you know what I mean, as opposed to just a broader vote on the light?
I think we can, the whole idea of rules and regulations is we can, you know, affirm that we will have lights there. But the rules and regulations, we can do all that stuff, you know, later on. We don't have to to do that. That can be a very long and procedure to figure out some various things on that. But I think it's perfectly within our, and I think it's our obligation after all, to affirm that we do go forward with the lights and the rules and regulations and the points that Corey has made, which we could deal with that and the neighbors who did the parking and all that, that that, you know, sometimes the the details can be difficult to do and it's not appropriate to to do that in a broad policy. But I think we certainly as a select board have an obligation at this point to affirm that our policy is that the lights should go forward.
Okay, so because it seems like just to kind of bring together what the board is saying here, it's almost inductive versus deductive. Jack is saying, maybe take a broader vote on lights without hashing out details tonight. Diane and Corey is saying that we need to hash out more details with rules and regs and have another meeting with a more specific presentation to get all the rules and legs. regs decided ahead of time. Jean, I feel like you're somewhere in the middle there. Diane had her hand up next, and then Jean, I'm trying to figure out consensus is overall. We still have to agree on and debate all these rules and regs and and vote on all of them. This can't just be a lights decision, we have to ratify or pass all of them too. Diane?
I I just want to stress, I I'm with Corey, and I think he in a different way feels as I do. But our obligation, I've I've read the presentation, the most recent presentation. I have notes on it, the that from CYB SA. I think it's incredibly good. I think I would love to have that debate. Our obligation is not to those of us that received it in our emails and the neighbors that received it in the general consensus and talk around town about whether lights are or should be on this property or not. Our obligation is to the general public, it's to the open meeting law. And, you know, call me a nerd on this, but we have an obligation as elected officials to the entire community to publicly post and notice our meetings. There is nowhere on this agenda and no attachment that says we're going to be discussing yes or no, binary decision on lights. And we have to, we have an obligation in the lease and to the open meeting law and to the citizens of the town to have a discussion and vote of lights at the Barnes complex posted on an agenda and have the presentation and give them an affirmative or a negative. For this, for the word lights, not even to be on this agenda and for us to go so far on this choice of yes or no on the lights, I I feel is just an absolute application of our responsibility.
Okay, Jean, and then I see a couple other public hands up.
So a few things on the substance. I I've read it, I've read the entire proposal, all the things that people want to debate, parking, dark sky, hours, it's all in the proposal in really clear, finite detail. I am, I would be inclined, and I'm going to do so now, to move that the select board set a rule and requirement that allows CYB SA to install permanent lights. As set forth in the proposal, they emailed to the select board, which is public record because they've emailed it to us on February eighth, twenty twenty two, and subject to the CYB SA's lights policies and standard operating procedures in that same proposal as a starting rule and requirement. With, you know, there's additional that can be filled out, but I understood Karen and Corey that you guys chose to put the agenda up and put the lights under rules and requirements. I'm going to abide by your decision there. I think that to the extent that Diane, you would like to do more, certainly you can vote no to the extent that someone will second the motion. But I think that this opens the door to providing a path forward on the rules and regulations, starting with the lights. And we can go from there, but at least to get that on the table in terms of an opening salvo, because I do think that their safety proposal and their policies and procedures addressed a lot of the concerns that have been talked about. It proposed, it it provided the independent review by Dark Sky that was also proposed. It's already done. If we look at it and review it, these lights have already been approved by Dark Sky. So again, my motion that's on the table is that the select board approve a first rule and requirement that allows CYB SA to install the permanent lights as set forth in their proposal that they emailed to us on February eighth, twenty twenty two, and subject to the standard operating procedures that they set forth in that same proposal.
Just a clarification, Jean, before I ask for a second on that motion. So you're saying, in in terms of debating, like, the amount of nights per week, right, and other details about that? Are you saying that that would be further debated? This would just be a broader lights vote to then debate more specifically?
That's set forth in the proposal, what they proposed.
Jean, may I make a suggestion on that? I'm inclined to second it, but I do think that we need to, that that we need to have a provision and an understanding that the fine tuning of the rules and regulations is not final.
That's why I said it's a first, it's a first.
Okay, so we we need to clarify that because, you know.
Yeah, I agree. This is not clear.
I think we need to establish the principle, but but, you know, the other things. And I know there's some, there's some questions about you know, we clearly a week ago made it very clear that this select board meeting, at our select board meeting was to be on the lights. And I guess Corey and Carrie, who put together the agenda, that that's their responsibility, thought that putting rules and regulations was was sufficient because it's very clear that the lights do, that we put them in the rules and regulations. We discussed it for that particular reason. But yeah, be that as it as it may, as long, I'm willing to second your your proposal, Jean, as long as it's very clear that this is, we're establishing the the broad parameters, but the rules and regulations will fine tune it. We're just using this proposal as kind of our our blueprint for further rules and regulations. Is that?
Jean, I don't know if, do you agree with that, what Jack just said or not? I'm not sure if your motion did.
Yes, I mean, the the safety proposals, the proposal that CYB SA has put forward is very specific in terms of exact dates, times of operation, amount of nights per week in terms of how that's decided, including based on the various needs of the schedules through the lights committee. There's a lot of specificity in there, and I think it's a good starting place if it needs to be further refined once it's actually in operation. You know, I I think that we can see, but I think that there can be other rules and requirements, like, for example, the alcohol. You know, that could be another rule and requirement. It sounds like there's disagreement with the neighbors about parking. And so I think that's one that we need to flesh out more. But again, my motion's on the table as to the first rule and requirement as it relates to lights.
And we could always fine tune it, that's the whole purpose. I just want clarification in in which, like, my feeling on alcohol, no alcohol at all. And I'm quite sure that will be part of the first fine tuning. And, you know, and I would like to second that, and and then I would probably follow that up with my own motion that the select board, you know, establish a a neighbor CBS, CYBS task force.
Separate motion, Jack.
I know, separate motion, I'm just indicating, because I can never say CBS.
Why, the why is, okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, so further discussion, Corey, I see your hand up. I want to say I do think we need to have a debate in relation to this lights vote about days of week and times and parameter set with that. I think we need to have a more robust discussion about that part specifically. But I'm okay with moving forward on the broader lights vote if the board wants that. But I think that that is, that the times and days of the week are especially something we would need to be discussing.
Of course.
And then Diane?
Yeah, I mean, I I think if we're going to talk about something, I think we need to be accurate about stuff. So on the dark sky certification, the proposal included a letter which endorsed the the fixture. However, getting a an installation certified from Dark Sky is a different matter. So I think, I I don't think this motion is well formed. And I think we'd be better served by, we can go through all these things. I think what what Jean alluded to is that the proposal has some things in it. So let's draw those out rather than trying to make a messy, you know, make messy policy. We can go through piece by piece and say, what about this? What about that? And let's just see how far we get. You know, so it it just, if we're trying to, we're passing something to say we're going to fix it later. Again, we're doing things backwards, and I just, it's just, it's a, it's bad policy.
Corey, are you saying to start going through those things right now or at another meeting?
So I'm in a Roberts Rules kind of tornado in my head here. Because, you know, on one hand, you know, I would, you know, one action could be to amend the motion to say pending the approval of rules and regulations, you know, individually with individual votes. I don't really, my intention isn't to kill this motion or to make it, to get it stuck in some some endlessness. So I'm loathe to do that because I don't think it's necessary. So, you know, what I'd probably say is, you know, if we can table the motion until we go through all these things, let's talk about all these things one by one, and we'll see where we end up. I think that'd be a better way to 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 discuss this personally. So I mean, I think tabling a motion would be the, would be, I guess, the proper mechanism here, but I'm.
No, I think that's valid, we can kind of put it on hold. Jean, would you be okay with tabling it for a little bit to talk through a few more details?
No.
Okay.
I I think we've beaten this 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 dead horse a lot, and I I appreciate where you are, Corey. But at the same time, like, week after week after week, we keep talking around about this without actually making any real decisions. And on my part, I'm frustrated. I will candidly admit, and I don't think I'm the only one. I think it's time for the board to start being decisive.
I think we're all frustrated on this issue, and we're all trying to move forward as a as in a productive manner as possible while still having all the information. And it's, this is an issue that's frustrating all of us collectively and individually. So I respect that. I think my only frustration just on the motion, Jean, is that I we can make it, but I don't know if I'm, we're going to feel that great about it when we still have so much more to hash out too. Diane?
I'm just gonna say it one more time. The notice was not sufficiently provided to the public that we were going to be making a binary decision on going forward with the lights. And I feel that that's just an absolute application of our responsibility. And I feel that that's just an absolute obligation of our responsibility, so I I'm obviously not in favor of the motion. If if we had had the presentation that was was sent to us, um, whenever it was sent to us. And that was presented to us, I would be ready to vote on it tonight with some parameters and rules and regulations in place. I would probably be. Voting affirmatively, but I feel like we have not noticed the public, our number one responsibility as a body. It doesn't matter. We get emails and ideas and suggestions all the time. If we don't notice it to the public that we're discussing it. That's why we only sent Jean and Jack to that meeting at the library, because otherwise it would have had to have been a publicly posted meeting, and we would have. Had the opportunity to deliberate at that time, so I feel like we've flubbed it up. I I apologize to CYB SA. I I think we actually. Hurt this process by our lack of process. And and to have a robust discussion about something not on agenda, I've been on the board for eleven and a half years. This is the most flagrant violation of the open meeting law that I've been witness to.
I doubt that. I doubt that.
Okay, let's.
And I know some examples.
All right, I.
Yeah, well, you and I can talk about that.
Diane, finish, and then you can talk. Diane, go ahead. You can finish.
I'm done.
Okay, Jack, do you have a comment?
No, I just think that um, it's time to move forward. I think we have a reasonable proposal. That that accurately, um. Reflects. What the culmination of a lot of debate was by the town by. You know, sixty forty percent vote. Um, I think we have uncovered this evening. That some of the rules and 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 regs that, um. You know, might need to be fine tuned, and that's why a a week ago, when we specifically. Set this tonight's meeting to discuss the lights. Um. And I don't fault, you know, Carrie and and Cory when they set the agenda for assuming as they did that. Phrasing it that way made it very clear that that was the purpose of this evening's. Uh, select board. Um. So we have uncovered that. That the mechanism that we did after all vote on. Um, last week. That we wanted to move forward on this, and they that we wanted a rules and regulations. Um, process to be continuing, so we could continue to fine tune. How this is actually applied, and it won't happen all in one cast in stone, but it will be an ongoing. You know, process, but I think it's important, as Jean said, and I think it is important. As I think we all agree, this has gone on for a very, very long time. Um. And and I think the citizens of this town deserve a select board that can actually move forward and get decisions done. So I think we need to get this step done. We know there's more work, but let's get it. Let's let's affirm the will of the people as expressed. At a sixty forty percent vote.
So we have three more members of the audience that have had their hand up for a while. I I would like to be able to recognize them so they feel heard as we're still discussing this. Cory, I'll go to you next, and then I want to let these three people speak their piece.
I mean, we do have a motion on the floor, so I guess I'm forced to do this. I move to amend the motion. To state pending approval of rules, rules and regulations and a presentation. Um, uh, the select board hearing, the lighting presentation in a public at our next public meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We have a, he's amending the motion. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
Uh, yeah, I just have to say, and and I apologize for not raising my hand.
No, go ahead. It's fine.
I'm really disappointed by this process. We literally have CYBS here, BY. Sorry, I'm becoming. We've got the baseball people here, ready to make a presentation, and we talked about this last week. I I and and Cory, you set the agenda with Carrie, so I I again, I'm just frustrated that. It's just constant process and no decisions, and I'm sure it's frustrating for the neighbors too. Which, you know, in fairness to the neighbors, which is why I'm being totally transparent about where I am. In terms of. The decision-making process and on the substance and on the merits where I think. That this needs to go and. The additional work that I still think needs to happen, but uh, you know. To say that we need a presentation from CYB SA and they're all here. Uh, I'm, you know.
No, I understand your frustration, Jean, and again, I take responsibility for nixing that presentation, and that's my fault. And and I really respect that several of us do want to move forward with a vote, but I also hate. For the board to be this divided and thinking that our process is not ethical or wrong, so I'm really. I think we're all getting more frustrated as this meeting is going on, because we all mean well. And we're all trying really hard, I think, to be as transparent as possible, and it's. To have the board disagreeing on this, I think, is really. Not ideal. Cory?
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I'm just. What's the rush? Why would we throw out? You know, good policy and good procedure for. A week or two weeks, uh, you know, I I if we want to do a special meeting next next week, we can do that. I I just, I don't see. You know, why we would. You know, sacrifice what's just good, you know, decision-making for for what's a week. I mean, this is. Uh, one of the, you know, one of my thoughts on on this was we have to get the ground rules done. Before we can hear a lighting proposal. I think that's pretty common sense, common sense, ground rules. Uh, and then we can get into the lighting proposal, you know, first things first, by going backwards. You know, we're we're just, we're gonna make a bad decision, we're gonna be paying for it later on, and again, we're talking about one week here. I mean, my my uh, most my amendment. You know, we can talk about all the things today still. And then we can, you know, listen to the to the presentation as, you know, if if that's. What we we feel we need to do, we just do that next week. Doesn't hurt anything.
Diane and then Jean.
I'd like to move both questions, both the amendment and the original motion.
Okay, wait, say that again.
I want to move the questions. We have a, we have a, an amendment on the floor that's been um, made and seconded, and then we have the main motion. I'd like to.
You can move only the amendment.
So I can, okay, only one at a time, so I move the amendment.
All right, so we're gonna take a vote on Cory's. Amendment. And I guess we're, yeah, so done with discussion. All right. Roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Nay.
Cory opens eye.
Jean Haley dippled nay, and I just want to point out next week is school vacation.
Diane Kennedy, I.
I'm torn on this. I really am. I'm really torn, but I'm gonna vote against it. I'm gonna say nay. All right, so now we have the original motion on the table. Jean, are you? Are you still fine with the? Framework of that? Do you want to clarify it again?
No, I think it's the place to start for the public to know where the select board stands on. The substance of this issue, and we can fine tune it as we go.
Okay. All right. Roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Jack, great, nigh.
I don't think the proposal protects the town properly or addresses residents' concerns. I can good conscious vote. I so, nay.
Jean Haley dippled a.
Diane Kennedy, nay.
Carrie Thompson, I. We're going for it. Under the assumption, though, that we still have a ton of things to hash out here.
Do you think, and and probably, uh, Cory, as much as anybody, do you think we should? Um. I think it's gonna be a good idea that ultimately we will have a kind of a uh, governance. Structure. Uh, about this for ongoing. Should we address that now or should we address it later?
Jack, I'm. Are are you, I mean, we still have to. Discuss the the rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations, yes.
So are you saying?
Part of that. I guess that would be part of the.
We can address it. Sure. It's on the agenda.
So I I guess I'm not sure what you're asking specifically, Jack.
I I I'm just. I think that at some point. We're going to want to have an ongoing forum. For the community and. The baseball people, um. To. Keep an eye on how this works down the line. Do we want to talk about it tonight? Or will that be part of the rules and regulations discussion we're gonna have later because it is? You know, ten twenty already.
No, I think that's a fair point, and obviously this is something that will need to be monitored, you know. Throughout the years in terms of whether changes are needed, so I think that's a valid point, but. Again, we have a lot more to discuss, and I feel like it needs to happen sooner rather than later. Cory, I saw, I think, I think.
I was just, I mean, I think, I think Jack's idea is a good one. I mean, I think the the sooner we get this, so I mean. You know. I think, and I don't know how to frame this, but you know, uh, and I don't know if we want to do an omnibus of all these rules and regs or one by one, but. You know, I think we add to the rules and regs creation of a uh, Barnes.
Some type of governance committee or something.
Right, neigh- neighbor committee. Uh, and that should include, you know, but we should think, we should talk about who that should include, but that should should include. Uh, you know, let's say two neighborhood representatives, two CYB SA members, and. I I don't know, somebody from the rec rec department. I'm just throwing this out there. Um, I'd also like to see that any any lights installed. Are independently certified by Dark Sky.
Yep.
Um, I'd also like to see a uh, us have a um. Set, you know, I know the proposal said had an hour, but you know, I I'd like to see. I say that lights that no game, that games all end exactly at nine.
Yeah.
And have uh, lights be off by nine fifteen by via automatic transfer switch. I think that's sufficient to get.
They have a, I think they have one already in there at nine.
Oh, but I think that's a good point, Cory.
I'm just, I'm just putting everything that I wanted.
I liked the omnibus idea.
Yeah, I'd also like to say, you know, I think max days of the week is important. Usually when we talk about. Like a a bar or something, we we give them kind of days. Uh, if we're trying to protect the neighborhood, we'll say, hey, you get these days for this hours, but these days for this hours, so. I mean, I think that, uh, you know, three days a week would be. A a good starting point, and we can go up from there if we feel, and I'd like to say three days a week is a starting point, but. Uh, we should have a mechanism for special events if CYB SA has something going on, or they need a couple additional days. Um, I'd also like to have uh, more wording about their public safety plan. Um, you know, so have CYB SA present a public safety plan to us when it comes to. Traffic. I am worried about children crossing the street at night. I don't know if that means maybe they have to get a a crossing guard. Does it need crossing guard for themselves with a? Reflective vest and a sign. Maybe the select board should change the speed limits in that area down to twenty five miles an hour. Um, to slow to to slow things down. Um, so. There's a omnibus set of stuff to move.
Okay.
So, um, this is, this just turned into a two-day meeting. We're planning to adjourn at three thirty in the morning, Cory.
I mean, at this point, yeah.
I hope you're serving coffee.
No, I think Cory brought up some really critical points here, and I agree with you, Cory, on all those things you said.
So.
All right. I, Diane, you had your hand up next. I'm trying to think of how. To best move forward here with all of this.
Well, I mean, I, we're we're now, in my mind, we're now talking about those regulations, so.
Right.
Um, you know, and and the 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 motion that passed, um, you know, laid the groundwork for lights, so. I I'd like to start talking about some of the rules and regulations that that Cory brought up. Um, just in term, just for conversation, one is the three days a week. That's three days a week for lights. Um, obviously.
Not playtime, you mean, yes, like.
Right, I mean, obviously, you know. There's, there's other parameters for their season and for how many days they'll be playing. Games and and to a point, so we're, when you say three days a week, you're specifically talking for lights, for the usage of lights.
Right.
And um, and and then just another question that I'm anxious to get people's input on is is the alcohol. Um, restriction, you know, my first. My first thought was, why do we even need to say that? Of course, it's not allowed on public land, like you can't drink anyway.
That was my first reaction, too.
So, but but I appreciate that it's worth putting in there and and, you know, I would. It it's it's youth sports. I I would say that under no circumstances would I be willing to consider a liquor license, so I would like to take that out. Um, they don't even sell liquor at at, you know, NCAA basketball games or whatever, so. Um, those are two things that are are were top of mind coming in here tonight for a discussion on those.
I agree with you on that, Diane, and I think, again, like other town land, like the common, we want there to be a possibility for liquor licenses, but especially for a youth. Sports complex. I do think. It's more critical that maybe we specify that. Um. Yeah, no, I agree, and in terms of playtime, obviously. The lights. Per week. Your, the light nights per week is something we have to decide. I think three is a. Possible answer, maybe three or four. Jean?
Um, yeah, so I I'm. I'm fine on the alcohol restriction. Again, keep in mind that. We're setting the terms for. The approach for what will happen with other leases throughout the town.
Hmm.
Including the Legion and others that sell, and so.
The Legion has a very different alcohol.
Yeah, they they have a liquor license, so in that instance, I think it makes sense to have a generic term that says no alcohol. Except as otherwise permitted by license here, probably doesn't make as much sense, so if. Now we're talking about rules and requirements that are specific just to CYB SA, yes. Um, I think on the amount of nights per week. I guess what I would caution this board about is making this donation. The making the restriction so tight that the donation is not financially viable, and you're essentially. Killing the lights through that process, because I do think that. If you, and I would really invite CYB SA to weigh in here. But I do think to have, to reach the goal of increasing field capacity in the way that they need to, particularly given. The fact you've got Cohastin and Health Softball playing on those fields. Three nights is gonna be a pretty aggressive limitation on. Um. On the fields and. You know, also to to the extent that we're trying to spread out some of the games and the practice to reduce parking and noise. You know, I think that's a consideration on that side, but I think the bigger one is. If if the board says, okay, you can do it for three nights, but then it really doesn't get CYB SA what it needs, including from the donor side. Or just in general to address the field capacity, you know, sort of, uh, it's, it's, it's not really, um. You're saying no to the lights, I think, and so I I would like to hear CYB SA's perspective on the amount of nights.
And I do think, and I'll, Vince, I'll let you talk. Again, this is something that I think we need to consider, though, in terms of all the sides here, and I mean, I would. I personally think like seven or six nights a week is is too much. Right? So Vince, what what do you think here in terms of the nights per week?
Yeah, so, thank you, um. Uh, within the uh. Policies and standard operating procedures, we do address a number of the points that Cory brought up as far as the number of nights we're targeting. Um, and also facilitating how they shut off and and when the last inning would be started. Um, and as well as the season as identified in the RFP, there was a detailed response in the RFP response that illustrates the. Time of play uh, for all facets on on both baseball and softball, um, so. Yeah, I'm not sure if you, Cory, you talked about an omnibus or one by one, um, and I'm sure how long you want to go on this, but if you want to refer to this document. Uh, the the piece off and and we can address each one, um. In a timely manner, or?
And with that, I mean, if the board's okay with that, and. I wanted to take, this is my goal, is to take some of the stuff you said, pull it out and put it into a bullet list, that way we all can be on the same page, so please go ahead.
And as far as the alcohol aspect, you know, we've always respected the town property, uh, under the Little League regulations. It's also incorporated in that. Um, again. I'm not a policeman. I'm not gonna walk around and see if anybody has a. Something illicit in their. Red solo cup that might give, might give it away if they have a red solo cup, but.
Yeah.
But we do address that, you know, if if there, if if there's an issue, we've, uh, we haven't had one as far as I know. Um, but we do uh, keep keep an eye on that situation. Um.
So do you want us to leave the door open for a liquor license or just closing the door? It doesn't matter to you. All right, so we just, we just close that door and that way.
Yeah, so we're in agreement on that issue, it seems like.
Yep.
Correct.
All right, so let's move on.
I mean, if we were to have a fundraiser, we're gonna have it an offsite, you know, yet like we did several years back, you know, where it's it's in a venue that has a liquor license. We're not gonna have anything that goes on at CYB SA. at CYB SA, CYB SA fields that incorporate that. Let's see. So I'm not sure where, you know, we have curfew set up here. Um, I believe it's on uh section D.
Yep.
Talks about the like, um, there is a break even point, you know, as far as the benefits of having lights as as Jean brought up. Uh, you know, going, having three nights per week and not being able to play the four nights, it's it's helping, but it's really not supporting what we're what we're trying to accomplish here. Um, we're trying to get the extra field capacity. And I think if we just go with three nights, it's 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 going to help, but it's not going to get us there. Um, we do have a a section in here that talks about four nights with both fields operating, two nights with only one field operating and one night with no fields operating. Um, but that's something that we can, you know, work on with the board as well as with the neighbors.
Mm hmm.
And uh, what are the dates, Vince? Um, Dan referenced it, but what are the what are the dates for the um for the season and the dates for the lights? If you can give me both of them.
Um, this is where I usually rely on Darren for all the immediate logistics.
Here if we need to bring him in.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Vince, are you read, you're reading from the proposal?
Correct. Yes, the proposal that Darren sent out after the last uh select board meeting.
Cause I also had a clarifying question too then about you said the the two fields, four nights and the one field, two nights, I believe. Are those all different nights technically or all the same four nights a week? Right? Cause I think that people in town have a question. It's like, are there going to be quote unquote, three or whatever dark nights with no lights? Or is it going to depend on the field?
Darren, you want to fill that one?
Well, yeah, I get when you come in and out as panelists, you lose a you lose.
Sorry, Darren.
But I I think I got the question. So um, the the right now, it it calls for an aggregate of five days per week per program. Okay. The August proposal laid out an oceanal schedule where you know, you would have four of those nights, you would have it, you'd run a dual operation. Two of the nights you run a single operation and then one of the nights, the seventh night, you would have no fields operational. Um, that adds up to five for program. You know, we have issues with rainouts and makeups and things like that. So you know, that that's representative. The key number here is five per program. I I strongly agree that three nights per program doesn't, you know, it 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 just, when I say it doesn't move the needle, what I'm saying is, yeah, it's a significant investment. And you know, that's that's only going to very partially accrue that investment. Um, yeah, I I think the board would echo what what Vin said. You know, if we can, our ask is five nights per program per week. That's the boys and girls getting equal. Okay, this is this is not pro rata based on registration. Um, if we're talking about fine tuning the plan, we, you know, we'd welcome the chance to to talk to to you about that. Um, quickly, the the inception of the lights would be on the fifteenth of May. That's when, you know, we have the the full vegetation around the the complex. It's it's well documented, and there's an example of that in in the proposal. So that's a, that's about a two, two to three week lag from the start of the season. But you know, we can manage the scheduling pileups, you know, up till that point. Um, and then the the primary season goes till the end of July, which is really when the peak of summer ball um really starts to fade. And then at the end of July going forward, we have residual summer ball games. There's a playoff games um into August, but we would keep the early night, early times, five thirty, six P M. And we'd only use the light to just make sure we got those games in, because a lot of those games get called on darkness, especially on chase. It gets dark very early. Um, and it's very dangerous. So you know, we wouldn't have night games per se, we but we'd have the early evening games and we maybe flick the lights on to get the last inning or or two in. Um, so you know, and there's a petering out in early August of summer ball. Uh, again, we wouldn't use them in fall ball in any capacity. So it's, we think it's a limited enough window to mitigate. Um, you know, this notion of year round use.
The time change too, that, yeah, that hits then in the fall.
Correct.
Yeah, y- yes. And I, and I would just, I would also say, look, you know, I I I appreciate the desire to hash some of this out, but I, you know, I think um nine thirty times cutoff gives people the chance to safely egress. That's an early relative cutoff compared to to other little leagues. And we're fine with that, which means you know, it's pretty strict parameters in there that you can't start a final inning um after eight fifty P M. So really, the cost that we incur there, it's acceptable. Basically, instead of having two two hour back to back games in the evening, because you really can't fit four hours of baseball or softball. You know, we take that early slot and we get so much needed practice, maybe for the younger kids, say five thirty or so. And then, you know, then then the game would come on, and then that's how we would utilize the lights in a in a night, in a day night capacity. So you know, the mitigation for our sake and the early curfew is already there. Um, and we're not asking to double up on games or big slots. We're going to take, you know, a more modest slot upfront and just be creative in our scheduling. Uh, you know, final point I would say is, you know, this fits in with our plan of allowing all ages, not just the oldest kids to benefit from these lights. So you know, we envision farm leaguers, um, seven, eight year olds uh getting getting the benefit of these two, so we can get the developmental aspect of the program back to where it needs to be.
Okay, Corey? And then Vince?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I mean, what's more valuable? I mean, um, you know, again, I I always try to look for places to to find natural, you know, cutoffs, natural limitations. You know, I I think, you know, to me, using the using the lights as a way to to fight off, you know, short days, that makes a lot of sense. Using lights to extend late nights, not so much. Um, that's where I think, you know, some of the the neighborhood discomfort comes with. I mean, if if I think I looked it up today, the the earliest, uh, the latest sunset, I think is eight twenty four, that which means we have lights till we have light till nine. So I guess my question is, you know, what's more valuable to you? Uh, you know, a night of the week or the half hour, you know, versus if the lights turned off at nine thirty versus nine, um, you know?
Mm hmm. Yeah.
That's kind of the question.
Yeah, okay, no. Thank you. So you know, in the vein of, you know, we're talking about safety and how safe these lights are. There's nothing less safe than trying to play baseball or softball into dusk.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, eight thirty, that's that's beyond unsafe. So you're you're really, you're you're talking about upwards of an hour leading up to sunset, you know, maybe a half hour. So you know, we have an aggregate need to, it's a programming need that, you know, we, you know, we operate those fields twenty twenty seven, twenty eight hours a week. Chase, Freedom and Barnes, you know, they're they're fully operational. Just by way of example, we have D one softball, which is um, which is K first and second grade girls. This past, this past year, we had sixty of those girls on the field at once. It was, it was probably the biggest safety hazard that we've ever um seen at CYB SA in recent history. You know, there were so many girls that we had to sort of set up like a P ninety X station in the outfield, just to sort of keep to keep them doing something other than hitting themselves with the ball. So you know, really spilling over our existing confines. And this is about programming space. This is not an issue of where, you know, our druthers. Um, we're coming at this with, we we've kind of whittled this down to the the to the bones in terms of what we think will get us by. And that's a nod to our desire to maintain the community character and the character of the neighborhood. I know that that comment might be met with skepticism. But you know, we're we're already at, we're asking for a pretty limited window. Um, and we 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 need the time. So w- we need all the time we're asking for.
Corey.
You you referenced early fall, but I mean, if I wrote down, I just wrote down here, and I'm not saying this is it. I'm just throwing a line in the sand. You can respond. You know, uh, I think Vincent may fifteenth, but we said may fifteenth to July fifteenth, where we've got a lot of sunlight. I mean, that's a two month window here. Um, what's your initial reaction to that? Um, and again, you know, I I do think that that th- there's possibility for, you know, I think there's a learning process for all of us. So, um, you know, uh, maybe we shift dates around, but um, just first glance, does that two month window sound like?
Yeah, that that two month, you know, it it sounds like we have the benefit of extended sunlight, but it's in if you've been down the fields and kind of observed CYB SA, and you know, I know your children may be in that window soon. It it it's, there's, there's not, we don't have the wherewithal to kind of further maximize the daylight. We need, we need more time and and the existing sunset times. They don't afford that, especially down at Chase. So I don't really know how to address that other than we we need to extend the window, even in the spring to early summer. We wouldn't go to early fall. It's early August where we'd have those early games um be allowed to finish, so they don't get called. The worst thing you can do when, you know, a team travels forty five minutes and you play four innings and the umpire calls it because you can't see it. And now you get it, you know, so it it's just terrible. But you know, I would say, I would say to those types of questions. Um, and I'm not trying to sort of express my disappointment, but it it may come off that way. But you know, I've I've been a little, I've been stricken by the lack of inbound intellectual curiosity around this topic and around whether it's our numbers, how the lights might work and how what the impact might be. Um, I I realize that the agenda might have been worded a certain way, but you know, the the info, the information, the data, we we've had it out there. And you know, we've long encouraged you to to make the make this type of inquiry. And we have a, we have a very large group of a focus group of parents, especially moms, who have to manage all the scheduling nightmares that we put upon them. That will attest to kind of our ask is doxed in very precisely to their needs and their pain points. So I just kind of want to validate, you know, I know we're 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 kind of addressing some of these topics anew, but they've been out there. Um, and I encourage you to continue to ask questions, but five is what we need. That's a point maybe of refinement around that. Um, you know, just, just one other thing is we're talking a lot about parking plans and safety. You know, one of the things we 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 want the experts to handle their realm of expertise. So we have a, we have the police chief with who's been very transparent and available to answer our questions about what constitutes a safe plan and not. And um, and we have a parking warden and they they get paid full time to enforce that. So we will continue to coordinate safety with the subject matter experts who are the safety officers of this town. Um, and we'll come back to you. And you know, the the biggest thing is the good house feeling, good house seal of approval um on safety that it that comes from CPD, and that's what we're going to do. Um, but you know, we we've addressed a lot of these things. So I think to Jean's point, you know, here we are. I'll, we'll, we'll take the laundry list offline, but you know, what we're giving you is, you know, we've, we've tried to be thoughtful and not ask too much. We've really scaled a lot of things back. Um, and we're just trying to avoid another year of the scheduling nightmares that we've had. So thanks for listening to all of that. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, I Diane, I'm going to go to you and then Jeff, one of our attendees has had his hand up for a while now, and I want to make sure that that person's recognized. So Jeff, I'm bringing you into the room. You can talk after Diane.
I just, I just had a quick question um for Darren, whether the whether it matters what five days of the week it is.
I was gonna ask that too, Diane. Thanks for asking.
Yeah, thanks Diane for the question. So we, it's been a, we've talked about that a lot. And um, you know, there's, there was some speculation that maybe Sunday night would be a nice night to 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 go dark. The, you know, the issue is we have a lot of families that maybe they're coming off of family time um and or traveling, or that might be a night to make games up. So you know, we we where we landed was we did not designate a particular night of the week per se to go lights or not lights. You know, we've left it at an aggregate number. So you know, we'd welcome, we we think we can iterate with the town on this, but we want you to hear that, you know, sometimes that Sunday night slot is the most valuable uh slot of the week. We got a lot of feedback around that. Some people trying to get back from seeing family out of town or whatever. Um. So there's that. And then can I just add one more question about the neighborhood committee that was brought up?
Yep.
Uh, our lights committee um purposely allows for non uh board members to be on that committee. So we could, you know, we could absolutely morph the existing proposed committee in our piece up to something that's, you know, even more inclusive. But we already did provide for the involvement or the, you know, the the membership of um neighbors or anybody from town who has a vested interest in CYB SA or the field.
Okay, I appreciate that. I don't know. I think Jack might have meant we need a more neutral starting point for the committee.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I think the um, once you get into the minutia of the of lesser rules and regulations, the people who are involved, they all have a vested interest. Um, one of the things that we keep forgetting is that one of the wonderful things about this, about Cohasset is we have so many active youth groups and organizations. And I remember um my kids are long since God knows where um and walking down there and seeing the vitality and saying, in this little town, we have this great vital program. And so supporting it, right? Not at the expense of the rest of the community. But you know, when you listen to how they're working through stuff, you understand that they're solving problems to make it work better. And um, if you have people of goodwill together, no matter what they bring into when they come in to it, I think a lot of these smaller issues, they'll just naturally resolve themselves. So just um discussion.
Okay, I don't think we're talking about small issues right now, though, in terms of rules and regulations. So I do think we have to be more specific tonight about some of these other details we're talking about.
Yep.
The person from the audience did not want to be promoted to panelists, so I assume they no longer want to speak. If anyone else is wanting to speak, pl- please put your hand up. I'm trying to make sure people are getting recognized here. All right. So it sounds like we have agreement on the alcohol policy, the safety policy, I do think you know, we know that we have cohesive police involved, but the parking issue specifically, we haven't necessarily discussed. I know that some people on here tonight brought up the issue of overnight parking. Does anyone have any strong feelings on that?
Well, the overnight start uh parking is typically the neighbors that park there.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
That was brought up. So.
I would say we just strike that.
Okay, I agree with you.
Um, for the safety thing, I mean, the one thing that's changing now is that there's, you know, kids crossing the street at night. Um, so you know, I I I think at minimum, we need to say that there's a you know, there's a a plan that, you know, Chief Quigley will approve, um, which doesn't include any Cohasset police officers. I don't think it's fair to ask the residents of Cohasset to pay for police time on this. Um, you know, so whatever that plan is, and you know, Chief Quigley gets to approve it, whether it's safe or not.
Yeah, we have a safety officer on our board. Um, we've always had as part of our Little League program, very involved during the COVID process, puts together a safety plan that's submitted into Little League for the whole complex. Uh, we can definitely incorporate this as 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 an aspect to that point.
And if we need to have that more specifically with Chief Quigley presented at a future board meeting, I think that'll be appropriate. Okay.
What about the uh, the Dark Sky certification for the installation? I I saw that they had a a way that they can come out and give the okay. I do know that you're choosing a product that that carries at least seven years ago, got some sort of endorsement, but um, I I think that would be something that the board would make the neighbors and and the community feel a lot more comfortable.
Vince or Darren?
Yeah, Darren, Darren, you've been working with the lighting and and have conversations with Dark Sky already. So.
Yep. Yeah. So I I would say on the product, that was an independent um letter, the commendation. But you know, Corey, I think to your point about the installation, um, you know, making sure we have someone that's independent, credible, that um can can reiterate that the final installation falls within, you know, Dark Sky criteria uh and guidelines, you know, we we'd like to have a a hand in that. You know, I will tell you right now that if that means us spending twenty five thousand to get a consultant to do that, because that's what other people want to do. You know, I I think we'd be opposed to that, but I I'm optimistic we can find someone that's credible, that's independent, that um, you know, that doesn't become the largest line item in the project.
Yeah, I think Dark Sky was like a couple thousand bucks, didn't seem onerous. But I mean, I mean, could we say, just say Dark Sky? You know, I don't want to say or equivalent, it may be a little bit too broad, but Dark Sky uh, or your similar certification, independent certification process, is that wording that you'd find acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I guess somebody's taking notes, maybe I will.
I've been trying to, but I I hope it's not just me, Diane.
And this just, this is why I have a problem with the this conversation not being posted. I I don't know what Dark Sky is, and and I don't see it in the proposal that um that we do have from Darren, which is very thorough. And like I said, I answered most of my questions, so I don't understand what Dark Sky is. So I I'd like to understand that. So I understand what.
That was brought up by a neighbor, my apologies, Diane, that was brought to me by a neighbor as a suggestion. So I'm just trying to incorporate neighborhood.
They're just a lighting consultant. That's not part of the lighting consultant that.
Correct, yeah.
I thought it all gotten an email on it that I'm checking to see if we were all on that email. Go ahead, Corey.
Oh, I brought this up in early at the select board in early January.
Yeah, I heard you said that, yeah.
Yeah, and they just said standards for how much light spills onto the road, how much light gets into the sky. And you know, again, this is independent. It's not our, it's not, and it's it's universal standards. They're really the uh, the thought leaders in this area. So.
Okay, I see it in my email now.
It was somewhere. I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to find it. All right. It was somewhere, I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to find it. All right.
One, one question for you guys, I mean, um. So we, we haven't talked, we haven't, you haven't given us, given us dates yet. You just kind of gave us a range and that's okay, we'll get through there. Special events that you have.
Sorry, which dates were you looking for, Corey?
He said May fifteenth was the start.
That was one of them. I didn't get an end date though. Um, but one of the questions is, is can, you know, are there special events that you have tournaments or whatever? That would require more lighting? I'm just wondering if there's, if there's a way where we can minimize. The every week impact or the length impact by, you know, rescheduling or putting some stuff in the calendar, like this is a week that you guys are very active. This is a week you are not. I'm just looking for, you know, just broadening the discussion a bit to ask about special events that you may have.
Then I can take that one. So, um, the, the specified dates are. The, the, the end of the formal night game season is July thirty-first. That's the end of the window. The beginning is May fifteenth. And then obviously we talked about the, the trickle over of early evening games. You know, at this point, it, this is what I would say, you, as we get into sort of summer ball and we get into lulls and schedules. Um, and we, and weather cooperates. There is the possibility that we do not need as much field time. I mean, a lot of times it's, it's typical New England weather. So I, I don't, you know, to answer your question of, you know, could we coordinate or could we proactively, um, not lay on. Night games when we, you know, when the schedule is cooperative, I think. You know, I think the board would say, you know, yes, we're using this as a utility. I, I think in reality, it's, it's not as. Um, realistic every year to think that, but yeah, so I mean, we, there may be times where we, you know, we have. Enough field capacity. So I think, I think we would support, you know, Vin and I, you, you can echo this, but. We, we would support taking that to the board. Um, in terms of special events, tournaments. We're, we're really, we have no plans and this product is really not appropriate to be a tournament, high-profile venue. So you know, it's not something that we would sort of seek to reinforce. We, right now we have All-Star Weekend. We do that one weekend a, a year with portable lights. The portable lights are vastly inferior in quality and effectiveness and safety, uh, but they've worked fantastically for us. But assuming we had permanent lights go in, we wouldn't have the need for the portable diesel lights that we truck in. So you know, I would say that the need for special equipment actually goes down when the lights go in. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, I guess, I, I guess, you know, one of my, so just to, you said May fifteenth to July thirty-first, is that kind of the, the, the bracket that you just gave? Okay, and then, um, my thought was more, you know, are there weeks where we say, listen, you know. Yeah, the end of July, you've got two nights a week or something like that where it's, it's the season or, you know, where we can, uh, we can, you know, kind of chop this. The stick of butter a little bit and say, you know, this is the, the core of your season, but these are kind of overflows. Just again, uh, just a, a general curiosity if there's busier weeks or not.
Well, because just, real quick, you did say there'd be some overflow in August, correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, you use the butter stick analogy, we, we chopped it at the front, the first three weeks of the season where we are operational. Um, we, we, we just did away with those out of hand because we intuitively believe that. Weather and rainouts can only set you so back in three weeks, so we're going to just deal with, you know, we're going to just deal with that up until mid-May. And then when full vegetation is there, we're going to, we're going to go live with lights mid-May. So that's, that's one curtailment we've already made. Um, as we get to the tail end of July. It, 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 it could be, the schedule could permit, you know, we could, we may have years where. We have teams that just aren't as competitive or we don't have certain stuff, you know, there, there may be less of a need to go five nights a week. Per program. I don't think it's prudent for us to, I think. Assure that ahead of time because the recent trend has not been that way, but if things slow down in July, I think we, we can make an agreement. With the town to say, look, our, our lighting usage is going to reflect our needs. And I think that's, I think that's the, the outcome that we're trying to affect here.
And the board always can have you come and give an update to, do you know what I mean? If certain other issues arise in terms of making changes. That's what could happen.
Right, and for precedent, COVID two years ago was just that. We had to have a, you know, we had to have a pre-flight. Check ride on all of our parking lot management. We, you know, we, we prevented the, we presented a safety plan. We had daily check-ins with Chief. Sylvia for the most part and, um, it, that was a struggle. That was basically being the masked police for months and months and months. And, um, when the town did hold us accountable at one point, we had to retrofit our plan to the, to new guidance. So, so we know how to check in with the town. We know that iterative all the time. Fine tuning, everything we do is, is an everyday part of what we do. Every time we do parade, award ceremony. Um, All-Star Weekend, it's a new set of circumstances and we have to answer to them. So we'll continue to do that.
We just have one more comment from the audience, Jill. If you have another thing to say, I'm bringing you in right now. I just saw your hand up.
Hello, everybody. It's, uh, well past my bedtime and I'm sure it is of all of your bedtime, so I don't want to hold you. But I just wanted to.
Saying till the end.
Right. I just want to make a comment that, uh, starting the fifteenth of May. Until about the thirtieth of June, school is still in session. And we're talking about kids somewhere around six to twelve years old. So I certainly hope the board takes that into consideration when they consider hours for lights. Uh, for these young kids.
So thank you, thank you for your comment. Okay. Anne Marie, I'm letting you in. I feel like we're getting close to maybe discussing the time of day tonight, whether it's nine, nine-thirty. Ten and maybe the amount of days per week. Anne Marie, can you hear us? You can comment.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, my voice is, um, pretty ragged. I'm not feeling well. Um, so I just want to clarify, it seems like it was brought up possibly by Dan, Diane. On, um, what nights Darren is asking to light up the fields and I didn't hear that properly answered. Or maybe I did and what I think was being said was that he would like to have it five to six nights a week. On both fields, allowing the neighbors one night of peace and quiet and that one night was not specified. But it did sound like that he wanted to have Sundays, even Sundays open. Four games for the benefit of his traveling families. And there was no mention of the benefit of the families. That are ringing this, um, this spot. So. I'm not sure. I'm hoping I heard incorrectly because really it, it did not seem in any way fair to the neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We will clarify that right now and we still need to vote on that. Darren?
Yeah, thanks Anne Marie. You know, what, what I would say is the, the number is five per program and we, we have not. Specified exactly what nights would go dark. Now, that being said. Um, and just to raise an earlier point, that's essentially a number that's been out there for the town. Uh, and for you as neighbors to consider and offer, uh, feedback, um, for a while now. And so, you know, the, the, the only counter that we got was zero nights a week. And so that obviously is, is not, doesn't work for us. So, you know, we would re-extend the invitation to sit down and, and, and to work on and, and hear you and what your preferences are. And that, that will be far of the, part of the fine tuning process. So, um, we're not stipulating at this point what nights. You know, I did mention travel back into town, but we're, you know, we're open to feedback and I think that could be a virtue. Of the committee. The number, the number is five. It's not specified which day a week.
Thank you, Darren. Corey and then Jean.
Um, I'm kind of getting back to my, it's eleven o'clock. Uh, I, I wonder if, uh, we do want to, um, there's no motions, there's nothing on the table, but. Continue this to the next meeting.
I mean, I feel like we have several. Let's see. We're definitely in agreement on certain things here, but I do think there's a little more to be fleshed out, especially with the nights and days of week. And the dates maybe. Jean, what were you going to say? And then Diane.
Well, I acknowledge it is a school night and it's eleven. Um, and also just to respond to Mr. Craft's comment about kids and school nights. I live across from the Cohasset Town skating pond, which has lights that come up. Probably around eight-thirty and they're on until midnight throughout the entire winter season. And I hear kids at night skating and playing all sorts of games and the night, the lights are about thirty to thirty-five feet. And I can just tell you from my own experience, whether or not it's a school night. This pond, which is very unregulated compared to what we're talking about. Kids are playing, but they go home, you know, at not nine-thirty, ten, depending on what's going on. And it's not younger kids out there. Kids are going to self-regulate. Parents aren't going to let their toddlers. You know, be playing at nine-thirty at night. And so I, I, I think we need to put some trust into people to have, you know. Reasonable parameters with their children and how long their children stay out at night for activities.
Okay, Diane.
I just wanted to kind of address Corey's comment about whether, you know, what the next steps are. So we've, we've voted to approve the lease tonight. Um, we have, um, I, I think the, the, the motion that. We would allow for lights on, on the property, um, that was, that was taken as a vote. And so now we're just building out the parameters of, of the rules and regulations. So I don't think. If we were to continue this conversation and I'm. Lukewarm, if we're, if it's just going to be another hour, I can hang in there, but I, I, I do appreciate everybody else's time, including the audience. And, and you know, I, I don't know that anything is going to get held up by refining these details of the, of. The regulations until a next meeting, but correct me if I'm wrong on that. We've made steps we need to make.
I think we probably only need another hour, maybe less than an hour. So I'm ready, I'm willing to stick it out to tonight and try to get it done, but if people are feeling. Like they want to continue it, I'm also fine with that. So I, I, I could go either way with this. Jack, are you talking? Oh, Diane, do a finish.
Yeah, and just for clarification again, like, like I don't know that we're going to be able to resolve, you know, the, the five nights and what nights. Tonight, I, I, I think I, I have a lot of opinions on that and, you know, but that doesn't mean we can't, we can't make a decision. You know, in the next hour in general and all of these different regulations and then punt on that one.
Okay, that's fair Diane. We could get everything but that done. Okay. Jack and then Jean. Jack, you're muted.
I was muted. Does that mean I can go home?
Not yet, no.
Oh, darn. Uh, no, I was just going to try to delineate what exactly is, is still let, left to be resolved. Some of the smaller issues will not, we won't know how to resolve them until they're actually operating. So, uh, but what are the major issues and I, and the, it's a number of, of. Nights and the hour, is that correct?
Yes, I mean, we still have to fully approve the, the rules and regulations as part of the.
Well, the rules and regulations can be amended later on, awesome.
Well, right, but we're also making progress tonight, so we're.
I know we are.
Yeah. Jean?
Um, so I'm sort of along the lines of thinking about what Jack is thinking about in terms of. If we're to do additional rules and regulations, what precisely are we talking about that we haven't been talking about? So we've been.
I think it's, okay, no, go ahead.
So I'm just, I'm just going to go through the list, just so someone can tell me. Number of lights, specific hours, dark sky or similar certification for the installation. Assuming that people agree these should be rules and regulations. Um, uh, safety plan, a CYB SA light committee or some variation thereof. No, no alcohol restriction was another one. It strikes me maybe what's left is parking, but is there something else?
Didn't we decide to just strike that and continue to let people park overnight? Corey, I believe you suggested that.
Yeah, okay.
So I think we're striking that, or we're at least, or we can vote to strike that.
I would say simply on the parking that there should be an understanding that one of the nice things that the baseball people can do is offer that option to their neighbors.
But yeah, Jean, I think you've mentioned it all.
And restrict it to the neighbors.
And the, and the one follow-up question that I had, and maybe this is for Diane, is what specific information do you think? You need to make a decision about the number of nights that is not present before you because. What I'm trying to figure out is, I really don't want to get to a meeting two days from now, a week from now, two weeks from now. And have the same conversation about, well, we need more information. And, and so I, I guess I'm trying to figure out, we have CYB SA right here. It probably does make sense to power through because again, these, these night parameters have been on the table since last August and so.
I agree. This is just the first time we've, we've talked about it. And, and so, yeah, no, I have all the information. I, I would like to drill down and, and. And talk about, you know, whether there is at least one weekend night in particular during the summer that. That there, you know, we could discuss not having lights because I, I do think that is something. You know, that, that is a big imposition on the neighbors. Um, you know, that, that's the time of year where you're going to have a cookout in your backyard and, and that kind of thing, so. Um.
So are you thinking about maybe a Sunday, I guess? I, I, I think, I think now's the time to, you know.
Oh, I agree.
Let's do it.
I'm, I'm suggesting that's the only thing that I think warrants still like a lot of further conversation i- is, is whether, you know. It, it would work. I mean, you know, Darren made a good case that it's very hard sometimes to know when a makeup game is going to be. Or, or when something's going to go. So there's some flexibility there, but at the same time, I also think it's important to recognize the neighbors' concerns with. You know, weekends in the summer and having Friday, Saturday, Sunday night games is, might be too much.
I, what about Sunday?
Darren, I'm, Darren looked like he might.
Can you live with Sunday, Darren?
What about Saturday? Saturday is, you know, they're equally relaxing, um, weekend days. Um, sorry, people may be inclined to host more people, um, maybe take advantage of the parking if it's less active in the parking lot and. Um, it's again, you, you could make the case vis-à-vis Saturday or Sunday. You, you can make a case for or against either. But I, I think that's, that's the middle of the weekend. It's a very active part of the weekend for all of us. And doing a lot of things. So what are your thoughts about that day?
I agree that Diane's right. We probably need to make one of these days an option and.
Okay.
So I, I, but I would be fine with Saturday or Sunday. Kim McGowan, I see your hand up. I want to recognize you before we continue this, if you have a point on this.
Hey guys, Chris McGowan, actually, um, just, just, hello. Um, just an idea, we, there's been discussion tonight of talking about a joint committee between, uh, members of CYB SA in the neighborhood.
Yep.
Um, would it be possible to establish that committee and get some, uh. Uh, neighborhood, uh, input into this issue of the hours and the, uh, and the days of the week. I mean, that's where the rubber meets the road for us as a neighborhood, obviously.
Right. Uh, yeah, I think that's a valid suggestion. Thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
We, we, we welcome that. I, I think we'd have to just kind of understand that, um, we, we came from a place where. There was zero, so we, we want to be collaborative in this and kind of understand, you know, we have, it's a relatively early curfew now. Uh, that we have out there and, but we, we, we welcome that, but I, I think. Uh, it's our hope that, you know, the vote that we had and I think the motion that was put forth about the essence of the plan in general. Um, with some maybe refinements to, to go, I, I really think our, our desire is that the plan reflects our needs. And so I think if we go into it in that spirit, but also in a spirit of, you know, compromising where we can. Um, we'd appreciate that. Um, so I just, I just wanted to put that out there. Uh, we're not going to, there's not going to be support or it, it won't make sense for us to invest in a project where it's going to be, say, three nights a week or. Um, you know, we're having to cut, cut these lights off a half hour earlier than we've already, already laid out. So I just, I just want to be transparent on that.
No, I agree. I also think regardless, we need to have this committee or.
Absolutely.
Discussing stuff. Jean?
It, yeah, I think it makes sense to take the neighbors' input into account. Um. I, I think though it has to be done in the vein that this is not being used as a mechanism to essentially get a parry victory. To reduce the number of nights to a point where the lights just aren't going to be a realistic project. Um, and I, I say that with all due respect. Um, and I, I say that with all due respect, having sat there and, you know, listened to the back and forth for quite a while in terms of inviting counter proposals and not hearing any. And so I would really like to hear specific counter proposals from the neighborhood about the nights that are best for them in terms of taking, you know, is it Saturday, is it Sunday? I, I think it has to be in that vein of like really trying to figure out what, what works for them.
Um, I mean, we can agree on nights per week tonight and then vote to choose either Saturday or Sunday based on neighbors' feedback. Do you know what I mean? Like, we can be more specific in our motions if we know we wanna pick Saturday or Sunday, but wanna hear from the neighborhood which they'd prefer. I think that's appropriate. Diane?
And, and I might suggest that it could be Saturday or Sunday and maybe a calendar is kind of worked out ahead of time. So there's some reliability for the neighbors. But for example, if it's raining on Saturday and that's, you know, or let's say we say no lights on Sunday, but it's raining on Saturday and, you know, you can flip it around. So you have some flexibility, um, within the thing. But I just think that's open for discussion and should be.
That's a good point, Diane. I like that.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to Diane's approach there. I just wanna make sure we provide some parameters to keep it productive. That's, I guess.
Well, we wanna make sure both parties negotiate in, in good faith as opposed to negotiate from their previous positions. So everybody's gotta give a little in, in the, uh, in the spirit of making it all work. And I'm confident they will. They're, they're people of goodwill on both sides.
Do we think we wanna take a vote on times or number of nights tonight? Cause I feel like everything else we agree on here in terms of the other rules and regs.
Um, yeah, the only thing that I would mention in terms of the music, there's, there's again, a specific music provision within the light, um, presentation that was attached. And so, you know, we can incorporate that in terms of the amplified music. That the one, the one sort of specific point I would add is that I think opening day weekend, there's music. It just says All-Star event right now. I think maybe that's a place where the point is not to have like big loudspeakers like the P A system, right? And to really limit that. And what we're talking about is only allowing that for All-Star weekends and opening day, cause I, I think opening day dropped off, but I could be wrong.
Darren.
We could.
Sorry Cory, yeah, it's opening day, the purpose of the speakers are introduce Congressman Lynch, the first pitch. And, you know, there is a little bit of music that plays as people trickle into the field, but it's not, it's kind of goes up and down and um, the, the music and sort of the loud, the real loudspeaker event is All-Star weekend where they're up to provide more entertainment. But we can add, we can add the provision on opening day. Just to, I mean, you know, just, just to call out exactly what it is we do there, if it's helpful. But again, that's also not under the lights, but happy to add.
Okay, Cory.
I was just gonna say, I mean, we could just say, you know, pending a, um, event license with the town like we do for other things.
Yeah. It did say, it does say that.
Yeah, so let's just, we keep it that way. I mean, that way, you know, just every year you send us a thing and we just say, okay. Yeah, I mean.
That's correct. We, we do come in front of the town, uh, for both opening day, which with, with the parade as well as All-Star weekend, so.
Okay. All right. Any other bones of contention here? I feel like there's a debate maybe between four nights a week, five nights a week.
I, I mean, I, I think for, for the nights of the week, you know, obviously we've got, I, I think there's a gap here between, you know, need and want. And, and I know that they, you know, we've heard that there are needs. Um, but, but I do think that lights are, are, are luxury as well here. Um, so, you know, you know, I'd like to, you know, maybe, and I, I know it's in the presentation and maybe I'll go back and look at it, but the, um, or maybe it, if we, if we went down, I think six nights a week is just, that's just not a I, I don't feel comfortable asking the neighbors to do that. I think that's a lot. Um, and, you know, they have needs too, in that they live there. Uh, so, you know, and you're talking that the, you know, if, you know, if you went down to. Whatever set number of games that you have, maybe there's a way we can fit in with, with less nights per week, with one more week or some nights with more. Uh, I'm just, uh, I'd like to get into the math a little bit more so we can be sure that we're maximizing what you can do, but also minimizing the, the neighborhood disruption.
Yep, okay, so just a couple of things, thank you. So if theoretically, if you allow for five nights a week per program to your point, there could be more nights of operation. It, you know, if they split, okay? So, um, wh- what we, w- we could synchronize the programs, um, so that they share the same five nights a week. So they'd have, we'd have dual operation and then, then there would be the two nights off. So I don't think we can reduce the aggregate numbers of days per week, but you know, we could, we could optimize the, the nights that we're operating and that, you know, we, we, we're gonna have plans to do that instead of, instead of having a couple nights a week where it's one or the other program. So I, I, I think that that's an area where we could create extra quiet space. Um, in terms of the scheduling, the, the majority of our scheduling, we, for, for spring baseball, we do our own scheduling. And this is where I'm gonna try to play admin for a second. Softball actually is at the behest of Hingham, who runs Hingham U softball, and they play with Norwell, Situett, um, and Hall. Um, and so, you know, w- we don't really have that kind of control. And then summer leagues, we get scheduled by the district of the suburban league. So while theoretically, you know, w- we, we can communicate, it's going to get very tedious and counterproductive for us to iterate on the schedules with the town, whether it's rec, whether it's town manager. So, you know, I think, um, we, we'd like to, we, you know, we, we'd like to maybe just devise a system where we, we, we can report in on the schedule with you and I think certify with you that we're proactively not, y- we're not, we're not using light capacity that we don't need. So there will be lulls in the schedule and we will take those opportunities to, to wrap things up early. Um, it's just hard to codify that because of the variables, most of them we don't control. Um, and then there's weather. So I, I, I'd like to say that, you know, I think we need a, an agreement in principle of, listen, we're not gonna, we're not gonna wantonly schedule extra games under the lights just to, just, just to create uptake. But there will be an ebbing of the need as we get further into that summer ball season. And potentially if we have picture perfect weather throughout the spring.
I mean, I do feel like, from what I can hear from some of the neighbors, that they would like a couple nights to be dark. Completely rather than staggered, but I'm not sure about that. But that's what it seems like neighbors would want. But I also like leaving the option open of getting feedback, neighbors. There was an echo of getting feedback on like a Saturday night versus Sunday night. Diane?
Yeah, and I, I just, just for clarity, are, are we talking operation of lights, you know, five nights a week, but baseball's still going on six or seven nights a week? Like, is, is this specific to the lights that we're discussing? Dates and times as opposed to operations of Little League?
I think we're just talking about lights.
Yeah.
Actual lights on.
Cause I do think that, I think that should be clarified just in general, you know, that, that there are games X number of nights a week in general and on Fridays and Saturdays or Mondays and Sundays or whatever it might be. Um, you know, the lights go off or the lights don't come on or whatever, whatever it is, that you can still maintain whatever your normal operations are within, you know, your scheduling needs.
Well said, yeah.
Does that make sense? Is it?
Yeah.
Jean?
So could I make a proposal, listening to everyone? It sounds like five nights a week? That it sounds like the preference of maybe preference might be the wrong word, compromise of the different groups might be five nights a week with the fields lit up, so the two fields. But with one of those days being Saturday or Sunday and CYBSA will work that through with the neighbors in terms of which day, you know, and, and it's gonna be tricky, right? Because you could have, um, neighbors disagreeing about what days they prefer. And so I think it has to be within reasons. Some might prefer Saturday versus Sunday. Um, but just, you know, try to do your best to come to the the consensus.
Well, and then the other night then would obviously be a weekday. And again, I don't know, I, I can't tell if we want days delineated or.
Who's gonna tell Michelle that her camera's on?
Oh, that's, there we go, okay.
Good.
Cory?
I'm just, I, I don't think the neighbors will find the, going from six, uh, nights a week by then combining to five much of a compromise. That seems like a little bit of a not, not quite to the compromise level. Um, you know, what I would, what I would say, and, and again, I'm trying to, you know, uh, be, uh, whatever here, trying to be cautious and also flexible, um, is to, you know, I know the neighbors, you know, want as least nights as possible and CYBSA wants the most nights as possible. I think that for me, the compromise is four nights a week, starting on, you know, basically whatever Tuesday to Saturday, whatever that gap is. Um, we leave Sunday out and then we just see how it goes. I mean, you guys, it, it's all understood. And if after the end of the season, you say, we really can't do it, um, then, you know, we have another discussion and maybe the neighbors go, you know what? The lights are beautiful. They're not a disruption whatsoever. And, uh, you know, there's, there's no issue there. Um, so, you know, I think a little bit of hesitancy here would go a long way to, to making people feel comfortable, but conservatism, I guess.
That's fair, Cory. I mean, Cory, you wanna make a motion on that?
Sure, I, I guess I'll omnibus it. Um, so I make a motion that we add to the, the rules and regulations, um, that accessory lighting, field lighting will be, uh, will, will occur on four nights per week between the days of Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday night. No, so you wanna have a Saturday, right? So Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, um, between the dates of May fifteenth and July thirty-first. To be added to the rules and regulations, and I'll just cap it there because there's a bunch of other stuff.
I, I would. Although I, no, um.
I'm not sure.
I, I don't know. Go ahead, Jack, what?
I'm, I'm not sure what, is that four nights and that's a plant's the five, uh, nights aggregate? Uh, that's a question, I guess, to Darren or Vince.
Yeah, I, I'm making the motion for four nights between those days for the board to consider, um, on the nights that I, that I proposed. Um, you know, taking the input from CYBSA and the neighbors and, you know, again, you know, no one's gonna get everything they want, so.
I like that, Cory. I would still like for it to be an option between Saturday or Sunday, but I, I overall like the motion. Um, Jean?
Yeah, again, I'd just like to hear from CYBSA to make sure that this proposal doesn't make the project non-viable and it's a effective new vote.
Yeah, I'm just smelling the no- numbers over in my head and, and trying to picture the scheduling, um. It's getting closer, but Darren, what are your thoughts? I know, you know, we're, we're still striving for five nights per, you know, for softball and five nights for Little League, um.
Hmm, yeah, I mean, I think what I would say is, um, and I, I'm a little, I mean, I, I wish we'd iterated a little on the data and what went into these numbers earlier because, um, for a good chunk of that season, you know, the, the five is, the five is what we need. And that's why we want, we wanna step up and make this investment. And whether it's prevailing wage or not, you know, this is, this is gonna be a, a pretty steep investment. Um, Cory, you know, what, what I would say is that as we get later into what, where summer ball is, that number four sounds a lot more realistic. So, you know, if we could introduce a, a, a part of that prime season where we can, we could roll in, we could phase into four nights a week. Um, I, I would support taking that to the board and making the case because that, the data probably gives us the best glimmer of hope to do that. But I think to just, to take it down to four now, kind of just taking stock of how this exchange of information has gone. I mean, I, I we, we need, we've, maybe at our peril, we've taken it down to five. But we need nights with five, w- we need those five nights and we will be the first to come to you and say, we can scale back to four um, when we can, but it, it, it's, it's, that's not gonna do it for the entirety of that mid-May to end of July season. So that's why, you know, we propose, look, um, maybe two dark nights and then we run the five and five the rest of the week.
Yeah, so two nights are dark anyway.
Yeah, and again, we're, we're, we're giving up the first three weeks of the season, which we, you know, we're two and a half, you know, that, that's a, that's a, that's a cutting of the butter stick that way. But I mean, it's not realistic to think that this is beneficial if we're uniformly cut to, to four nights a week throughout the season.
You know, spring balls is a heavy peak time with a lot of rain blaze. Um, and I think from May fifteenth through June fifteenth is probably our, our biggest um, part of the season from a number standpoint. It does trickle off for summer ball, starting towards the tail end of, of June that rolls through July. Um, so maybe it's the five nights from May fifteenth through June fifteenth and then uh, the four nights from June fifteen through July thirty-first. Is that Darren?
Yeah, that's one option.
I'm, I'm the retired president, Vin, you're the president, but I would say the data, we, we, I, we, based on what we've done, we would take that to the board and support that.
Yeah, I'm relaying you from the data crunching.
And again, we all have seen the data too. Like, we've all read the data, we've seen the data. We're trying to figure out if there are some other possible areas of compromise for the neighbors, do you know what I mean? So we're, we, we've all read your data. That's, I understand that you think that five nights or more would be ideal, but I think like Cory's saying, he's trying to extend it. We're trying to extend it all of branch now to see what wiggle room we might have.
Yep.
With this agreement to, you know.
Yep.
Try to bring the community together. I think that splitting the month is, the months too is also another option. Diane?
I, I kinda think that.
Hold on, Diane has her hand up first, Jack, and then.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I mean, the, the, you know, here is where the rubber meets the road and why, you know, all of us being prepared to have this conversation and look at the data, um, in a public meeting would have been helpful to everybody. But, uh, uh, one thing I do wanna make sure we do is when we approve days and whatever they are, number of days and times, that we also include the days and times that you're gonna be using the fields generally. Plus the days and times you're gonna be using the, the, the lights. Because for example, like, can you start Saturday games at, so maybe Saturday's a day you wanna keep because you can actually start some games or practices or something at eleven and, you know, extending that day. I, 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 I just think it's begs a further conversation. I just don't know that we can.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but just quickly, we're the only Little League in our part of the state, and I researched this far and wide. And we did, we were thrilled, blessed to work with Michelle on this, but we had to basically put together an RFP response. And we did that because we had no lease and we gladly did it. We took the, we took the process very seriously. Um, we detailed in that lease our hours of operation. So by, by necessity on the weekends, we open up the girls at eight-thirty and we run them till like six P M. The boys, we open them at nine o'clock, the farm leaguers and the grades, and we run them all day. We run those fields every day. We're the town's Little League. I, I, I just, I don't think we should get into this dynamic where we're, we're going to the town and, and sort of iterating on what days we wish to use the fields. Um, to a commenter's, uh, point earlier about people do come play pickup when the fields are open, you know, during the days. But so, y- y- I, I just, we've put a lot of work into just retaining a space of use that we've had and we've made, taken great control of since nineteen fifty-two. And it wasn't us, it was people before that. So that process, we did that and a lot of people had questions around, why are you putting together an RFP just to kind of, you're the Little League of the town. We did it. We're, we're all about process, but I think this is too much process with respect to just being able to go to the field on eleven o'clock. We need those fields and that's why we're, that's why we're here about the lights. So I'm, I respectfully just wanna assert that, you know, this stuff takes time. We're volunteers. I know y'all are busy when we reach out to you, but we run businesses too. And I don't like to do a senior thesis equivalent of an RFP, just so we can go back to our fields this spring. So I just wanna comment that's to prevail a little bit. Thanks.
And, and fair enough. And, and I, I just brought the RFP response up and those hours are in there. So thank you.
Thanks.
Cory? Corey.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to amend my motion to include five nights a week between the May fifteenth and June fifteenth.
Okay.
Thank you, Vince, for, for working with us.
So now we have changed that motion. Do we have a second?
I don't have a second, so I guess.
Second, wait, so let me just make sure. Corey, I was
I'll make you clean.
All right, let's let Corey rephrase it and then Jean decide if you want to second it.
Uh, the motion is for the dates of which lights to be used, um, will be between the dates of May fifteenth and June fifteenth. June fourteenth, let's put it that way, inclusive. That lights will be allowed five nights per week uh, with only one weekend day. How's that for a little flexibility?
I like that.
So, and then, uh, between July, between June fifteenth and July thirty first. Lights will be four nights a week. Including one weekend day, not to, not to. And there will be no lights passed starting August first through the beginning of the season. I don't really need to say that, but I'll put that in there too.
And Friday is a weeknight?
Yes. So weekends are only Saturdays, Sundays. Yeah. So they get one, they get either Saturday or Sunday every week, but not both.
Okay. And what about the request for carryover into early August with early, like the, the carryover, if they had like a rain delay or something?
Uh, so it sounded like the carryover really was taken care of between the fifteenth and thirty-first, but I think would the board would be open to, uh, you know, a special application, uh, with special circumstance. So, you know, any, any August dates, you know, will be brought in front of the board for singular approval. You know, if they need five more days, you know, because we got five hurricanes, I don't think that's an unreasonable thing.
I don't think, I don't think it's going to be a, a nightly thing during the weeks of August. Um, it may be, you know, one or two games that, that are that start early, but then, you know, extra innings could happen or, you know, a rally could go on that all of a sudden, you know, it's getting dark and there's a half an inning left or two innings left and you want to throw the lights on for half an hour. Um, so it's, it would be tough to then have to come in front of the board, you know, while the game's going on. Cause we're not, we're not necessarily anticipating that the game's going to extend during that, you know, first couple of weeks in August as we wrap up the summer ball. Uh, but it could be, I don't know, Darren, five, four, five individual games that, um, you know, sporadically thrown within that first two weeks.
Let's see how it goes. I, I mean, if, if it really is runs into it, I think, you know, putting just, you know, if you, if it come August, there's a problem, I think we can address it then.
Yeah, and, you know, we can figure out, come Jan or July, we can figure out how many games we have left from makeup standpoint. And then we can say, okay, we may have four or five games here that we're going to push them to the light scenario.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, so you're clarifying.
Your motion's on the table, Corey, right?
Yes, with, with the slightly amended ending that, uh, dates after, uh, beginning August first, uh, will for come in front of, there will be discussion for lights, about lights as fill-in for dates past August first.
Why don't we just give them five, five, five days, fill-in days?
Well, then it moves around. So let's just, I mean, let's figure it out.
Corey's making the motion. All right. All right. Thank you, Corey. Is there a second?
Uh, I will second, and I want to clarify, and Corey, please correct me if I'm wrong. When you say five nights or four nights, I understand we're lighting both fields.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. So we have a second. We started discussion. Any further discussion before taking a vote on this motion? Okay, roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Jack, great night.
Corey Evans, I.
Inhale dipple dog.
Diane Kennedy, nay.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay. That's done. What else do we need to do?
Talk about hours. I'll make a motion that the hours that the lights turn off by nine o'clock.
Is there a second?
There's maybe a second. If there's not a second, it dies.
We're pushing for nine thirty though.
All right, well, hold on.
Making a motion.
A second.
Is there a second?
I don't see a second. So that motion has died. All right.
Sorry.
Hey Vince, run for select board if you want to take the votes. Diane?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think with, with respect to the lights, you know, some nights, especially in the summer, there's, there's daylight until eight forty. So
Right.
Um, you know, I, I think nine o'clock is
Too early.
Too early, frankly. Um, I, you know, especially for the height of the summer, but.
No, I agree. Jean?
Um, yeah, I'm doing this off of memory, but if I recall, I believe nine thirty was the automatic. So I would make a motion that the lights are on until nine thirty, at which point they turn off vis a vis the automatic timer. But subject to the conditions that CYBSA has put in there in terms of no pitches after nine fifteen.
Or eight fifty, I think they said, or
Eight fifty, yeah.
Oh, it's no innings starts before
Oh, no innings start. Okay, that's the innings.
We can build that into separate regulation too. Rather than making a complicated regulation, we can just, you just
Okay, fine. Lights off, nine thirty by automatic timer.
Okay, do we?
That's my motion.
Thanks. Great, great motion. All right. Our motions are getting shorter. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Jack.
Jack, great night.
For Evan's eye.
Diane Kennedy, nay.
Carrie Thompson, I.
I'd like to make a motion that, and this is, well, I'll, I'll bounce this motion, uh, off our representatives. Uh, that is there a mechanism for you not to have, to, to not have the lights turn on when games are not being played? I mean, is that, you know, I don't know what kind of switches or whatever, if that's an onerous, but I do think that a provision to say that the lights won't, will, will not be on during days aren't games, whether it's weather or scheduling. Is that, you could accommodate?
Yes. Okay. That can be accommodated.
Then I make a motion that the light shall not be on, uh, during times when there are no games being played.
Okay, we have a second. We have a second. Further discussion. Roll call vote, Jack.
Jack, great night.
Corey Evans, I.
Genially dipple duck.
Diane Kennedy, nay.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay. What else do we need to do? Let's see. We voted on dates. Do we need to kind of, if we want to go back to the omnibus that Corey was suggesting, do we want to just approve the other rules, how we discussed? It seems like we're in agreement on the rest of them.
Uh, yeah, I don't think we
Diane, I, I just didn't hear any other disagreement on the other things.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure we, we read through and maybe Corey was going to do that. We read through the omnibus, um,
Cause we cut out the, we cut out the parking. Like we struck that, correct?
It, yeah, could you just state aloud what you mean by the omnibus at this point? Just
I, I like the word you picked, Corey, but
I, I will, I will do my best here. Okay, so, um, for the rules and regulations, we will save, uh, no amplified music shall be permitted on or from the premises. Unless as permitted in writing by the select board in advance, just clean that sentence up. CYBSA is required to comply with all federal, state, local bylaws and codes. No alcohol is committed any, anywhere on the premises. Um, and we take out except pursuant to liquor license. We add, uh, any lighting fixtures will, uh, will be uh, inspected and approved by Dark Sky or equivalent lighting safety standards body. The CYBSA shall submit a revised safety plan, which takes into account nighttime issues, um, and submit that for approval with Chief Quigley. We are going to say that, uh, the, uh, use of CYBSA is for, uh, youth sports only. Uh, we already did all the other stuff. And zoning bylaws. So that's, that's what I've got. Did I miss anything?
No, that was great. All right. Do we have a second? Oh, wait. If we have a second before we discuss more.
I move those things to put, be put on the rules and regulations part of the lease.
Okay, we need a second before we can discuss.
Second.
Okay, I was going to second it. Okay. All right. Diane and then Jean.
Um, sorry about this, but just on an amplified music, I, just to, just to make it even cleaner, I would just say no amplified uses music unless permitted by select board. If we permit something, it's in writing to declare, just a grammatical thing. And then you also mentioned codes. They, oh, uh,
Bylaws and codes.
Yeah. Is that redundant? Cause I believe that's in the, in the lease.
That, that is, I, I, it's in there now. I, I do know that the neighborhood was seeking like an affirmative part of that. So I don't think there's harm to put it in here. So that's why I included it. Uh, I will, I do think your change of wording is just fine. So, uh, they accept that. And I would add no amplified music or PA system, um, because I don't think you guys are looking for a PA system either. So, no, no amplified music or PA system shall be on the premises, except as permitted by the select board in writing in advance. Is that better, Diane?
I can't tell.
Just don't think, I don't think you need the in writing.
Okay. All right, Diane. Diane, is that all you have? Cause Jean has her hand up too. Okay, Jean.
Um, did we want to clarify All-Star Weekend and opening day like we've done for the last, I don't know, fifty years have the music? Cause I know that was something that we had previously talked about. So that's my first question. The second question is, I would just say as to the dark sky certification. I think we should say the lights will be certified by dark sky or receive an equivalent certification. It's the, just the word body. Like, I don't know how many nonprofits there are out there doing this. There's probably not many experts that do this for money, probably not, just nonprofits. Just to provide a little flex on that front.
Could, could I say that the, well, I can be more specific to that. The installation of the light shall receive certification from Dark Sky or
Equivalent.
Equivalent.
Organization, not, not me, I agree, body sounds weird.
But I can just leave it Dark Sky. I mean, that, that leaves them less flexibility. I don't think Dark Sky is hard to work with, but, um, we can just leave it at
They may be busy, just, or equivalent, I think that's fine. Yeah.
Okay. Jean, is that all you have?
Yep.
Diane?
Already kind of forgot what I was going to say, but just in terms of dark sky, um, I, I, I don't know that we should be determining a public entity, you know, profit or for-profit that provides the service, but you know what I mean? Like, we're actually saying, we're going to ask them to serve Coca-Cola instead of, I, I, I think we should make that, that more generic.
But, well, I think Diane, um, Dark Sky or equivalent does that. Cause then we're using Dark Sky kind of like
So you're saying, I think Diane's saying not to even use the term dark sky. Like, do, would you say Diane, something like lighting expert?
A professional third-party lighting. I don't, you know, I don't know, because I don't know, I haven't done a deep dive on what dark star is. I just think it's I feel weird, like, I feel weird saying we're going to give our business to any one entity.
Okay.
Why do they're in light? Hold on, Jack, you don't have your hand up. Other people have their hand up.
I don't either. I was just going to say, Dan, with Dark Sky is certainly a leading organization and it sets a standard or, or a bar that another organization would have to meet. That way it's not like, you know, you can't go to, you know, Bill's Light Shop. Um, so I mean, it just gives us a little bit of guidance. Um, and I'm comfortable because it's a nonprofit and it's fairly well, it's very well known. Um, but
Darren, do over
It, it's a good housekeeping seal. It's not Coke versus Pepsi. So we're, we're okay. It does provide assurance and it's, it's credible. And I think just quickly on the music and things like that, sometimes, you know, especially with the younger kids, some people will bring these little Bluetooth sort of pocket speakers you can put in your pocket and things like that. And they're not, they're not quite amplified. We, you know, we, we, we can have our policy known, but I, I don't, I don't want any, anyone to think that, you know, our use of the fields are at risk because, you know, maybe they have their little boots box. So, I mean, I just don't know. Music is people are putting their phones on blast to, to play music in dugouts and things like that. We will definitely institute a policy. Um, I just want to call attention to the fact that there are PA speakers and their speakers are sometimes not much bigger than that. So, um, you know, I, I, that, that's just, that's, that's just the reality. I don't think the music blares off the premise, but um, I don't want the, I don't want the measure to be too draconian, that sort of something we really can't enforce. So
Okay.
We're not going to, we're not going to program music or loudspeaker activities into anything but opening day and All-Star Weekend. So.
All right. Thanks, Darren, Jean, and then Jack.
Um, yeah, I'm sort of along the same line of Corey with Dark Sky. It's an SRO essentially, and it's not a for-profit. It's, it's I don't even know how you would phrase it, um, if we weren't to use dark squad, dark sky. There is no equivalent other than dark sky. Um, so I, I think, I think a dark sky is, is fine. And there probably are equivalents that are lighting experts in the surrounding area, but um, I just don't think we should get into like the specific back and forth beyond dark sky. And so that's the first point. The second point is on the amplified music. What if we said, no amplified music by a PA system? Because isn't that really what we're talking about? Like if like some
I think that's the biggest concern. Yeah.
Yeah. Cheering their kid on was like a phone, like I, I sort of don't want to make the town into Footloose. And so I just, I think, um, you know, let's try to be reasonable here.
Okay, Jack.
Yeah, it, to the extent that the board feels concerned about dark sky, I think you could just say light mitigation specialists, you know, similar to dark sky.
Again, I, I think we're, we're all in agreement here. It's just what's, what's most appropriate to put in.
Yeah, I just suggest, I'm just the coverage, that's all. I don't really, I don't have a problem with dark sky, but if it is an issue, light mitigation specialist.
I can go either way too. Okay. Any, any further discussion on this? Corey made a very big motion that took a lot of effort. Corey?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I certainly, you know, to respond to, to CYBSA, you, um, I don't think the, the intention of the no amplified music is to stop Bluetooth speakers or, you know, someone's Jeep. Um, you know, that's, that's different than, you know, I'm talking like football-like stadium type stuff. Um, you know, and again, I'm, not that I'm expecting that, but, um, certainly having nothing permanent, nothing, you know, of major, by just saying this, I, I don't think you'll run into issues where somebody has a little Bluetooth speaker and they're trying to play in their dugout. Um, you know, and, and, uh, I don't see that would, would be a, a reasonable uh, reason for the board to revoke your lease. So that's, that's certainly not the intention here.
Okay, Jack. Your hand.
No, that was my, I was just about the light mitigation if necessary.
All right. Are we ready to vote on this? In its current form?
I call the vote.
All right. Roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Jack, great night.
For Evan's eye.
Inhale the bold eye.
Diane Kennedy, nay, although I think all of these changes are very good. It's procedural, though.
Carrie Thompson, I. Just the lack of energy in all of our voices for that was pretty bad. That was pretty bad. Well, all right, we just voted on that. We might be done with this agenda item that began it, that was supposed to begin at eight oh five. Are we finished with this agenda item to move on to our quick town meeting warrant update? Darren and Vince, I hope you've had fun tonight.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate your efforts.
Corey?
Thank you, guys.
I was just, and I, I get, I'm not trying to add procedural or anything here, but the, um, you know, is it worth just having, you know, let's get these typed up and just present them at the next select board meeting? Just as in, in, in clean format.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Just mail them out.
Facts.
I think that'd be helpful, Corey.
Yeah.
I think we can recon, well, yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
All right. All right, Chris. You still there? Okay.
The, uh, the warrant, I will all go through quickly because I appreciate that. It's only eight minutes of midnight. Uh, the current draft warrant has twenty-one articles on it. That's nineteen articles plus two citizen petitions. The two citizens that came in deal with, um, uh, a requirement to vote any, uh, s- single allocation for a project of, of a million dollars or more to a ballot, regardless of if it's an override or debt exclusion. Um, and to petition the state to allow remote participation at town meetings. More information on both those, uh, they were just filed yesterday. Uh, so there are all the usual articles. Um, work has already begun on capital, deep into capital, deep into the budget. The, the other couple that are kicking around, no zoning articles are heading for the warrant this spring. Uh, there's, um, conversations about, um, expanding the sewer district to include the Cook Estates, uh, which is a problem area. Uh, and, and an expansion of borrowing authority under the old colony loan program, which allows support for people converting. There's, uh, a, the transfer, the potential transfer land to the municipal housing trust, which we were discussing. The alternative, uh, energy committee proposal, which you heard from Tanya earlier today. The, uh, the town meeting, uh, construction manager risk proposal, which was discussed with all of you earlier. Uh, and then we're still working with the conservation trust about a land, a possible land, um, swap of a kind. I'm not sure that's going to, if I, I don't know if that's going to make it to the warrant. I don't know if we're quite ready. I'm waiting for some reports on, on, on land. Uh, this is land that borders the espasino property. We've talked with the conservation trust for a couple of years. Ten, shut, so those conversations or slowed them down, but we're, we're getting a, we're, we're looking to see if there's enough enough in, information to, to move. And if you remember the rice lot that one other lot we were talking about, if, for the agenda last fall, that, that's still the owners are still trying to figure out ownership. So that's not heading for the warrant as of now. So again, it's, uh, the, the, the current warrant is, is twenty-one articles. Uh, advisor will start looking at them tomorrow night, uh, and figuring out the scheduling. You'll be doing the very same thing two weeks from now. So, um, and then, uh, I will go back over with you the schedule. Uh, there's a, a number of potential joint meetings. And we'll also have to be talking about, uh, whether the board's going to start moving back in person, obviously how we present things, if it's in person or on Zoom will be different. Cause there, there are several joint, potential joint meeting scheduled for March, um, that would involve capital and CPC and citizen petition presentations. We just have to hammer out those details over the next week or so. And again, and part of that conversation will be whether or not we're back in person. So that's, again, with time being of what it is, we'll be circulating a little cleaner version of this warrant to all of you just to look at, um, after I look at, we speak with advisor tomorrow night and, uh, you'll start. Those in for consideration, probably just the simple ones, you know, the ones that are on every year.
Right.
Starting on the first, uh, and, uh, you know, the, and then move from there. So, um, I see that Diane has a question, Carrie.
Yeah, no, it would just real quick from, from me is, does that potentially include a placeholder for the one that Tanya talked about tonight?
I'm sorry if I, I, I think I said that, but if it was clear, yes, there is, there's a holder for that. There's actually four place, four or five placeholders. Uh, which again, you'll have to decide whether or not you can put them on.
Right, right. I wanted to make sure there was a spot. Okay.
Yeah, no, she's on there. So.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Just want to flag that, that when you said there's no zoning articles, I, I know that, that the vote at special town meeting was, you know, the was pretty affirmative that we would anticipate in the spring, um, bringing back some of these zoning articles. I understand why we're not doing that, but I think it would be good just to have a briefing at one of our next meetings about why, because the, again, the vote and the expectation from special town meeting was that we would see these again at spring.
I think you will see them. I think the town will see them again. I just don't think it's, I, I, the planning board is very deep in conversation and I, I don't think they've reached, well, they have not reached a consensus as to how to move forward. So until they do, I, I don't know. And again, I, it, that's one element of it. The other is that, you know, the town is going to embark on this, uh, comprehensive zoning analysis. And I think some of that will be rolled into that conversation as well. Um, so I, uh, that's it. We'll, I'll make sure that we'll get Lauren in to, to give an update, uh, or, or Amy. Uh, or the zoning working.
Okay, Jack.
Yeah, just, just an update on that there. We didn't get a lot of response to the first request for a consultant to do some of the technical analysis. So we put it out again and we got another, uh, company so far. So we now have two people who are are a, at least interested in perhaps doing that. And that's important because there's, um, a lot of the analysis of the zoning bylaws and changes gets very legally technical. And you've got to have things match up with other things. And, uh, I'll spare you the exciting details. But they're, they're moving forward on this, so it's a challenge.
All right. Thank you, Jack.
If there's other question, if there's no other question on the warrant, I'll, I'll pass on any other updates on the next.
All right. Select board comments. I will. Hold on, Jack.
I was making my comment.
Second.
Oh, okay. Well, we have a motion on the table, actually.
Thank you, Diane. Let's go for it.
You two are going for it. Hey, I respect that. I respect that. Any, all right, any further discussion? Doesn't look like it. Are you, you're trying to get out before midnight. Roll call vote, starting with.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Lee Dipple, done.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Harry Thompson, I. Eleven fifty-eight. Chris, thank you. Michelle. Tracy.
Yes. Tracy headed off. Yeah, Tracy and I can close the building in a second. So, all right.
All right. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.